All right, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board. We called this meeting to 6:01 and had a non-public session, so we've already done the pledge. We are now back, and we are going to start with correspondence.
Correspondence this evening? Sorry, I was looking at the wrong folder. We have an invitation from...
Can you read that?
Barely. This is a letter of appreciation for the board's support during Teacher Appreciation Week, so that's nice. And the other piece is the town of Goffstown just did a press release. Chief Murray has announced that we have a new deputy chief, so they have hired Deputy Chief Selick, Ben Selick. So I've not had the chance to meet the deputy yet, but I will look forward to meeting him. And the other news release was that Lieutenant Bill Connor was promoted to captain, so Lieutenant Connor is now the captain.
Nice, awesome, thank you.
Congratulations to Captain Connor.
All right, commendations, good news. Go ahead, Will.
Hi, everyone. Okay, so I would like to start off with co-curricular night went super well. Huge thank you to CNE's. It was just great. I think everyone had a good time. The food was really good, so thank you to CNE's. June 14th is Senior Palooza at...
Barnard.
Barnard, thank you. I was going to say Bartlett, and I was like, I know that that's wrong. And Baccalaurate is this coming Sunday, so very excited for that. Juniors are going to Walden Pond this week on their field trip. I went today. It was actually very fun. I learned a lot about Henry Thorough. We got to see like his house, and we took what they call like a silent walk. And so basically, we learned about how he would take like five to six hour walks in the woods. It was actually a really cool field trip. And then prom was a huge success. Another huge thank you to CNE's. My class council, so proud of them. We put blood, sweat, and tears into that prom, and it was just perfect. I'm just so grateful, so yeah.
Yeah, I have to say, two kids went to that prom, and they stayed the entire night. And they had a blast.
Good, thank you.
Are you all set, Will?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
I have a few other things to add. So over at Maple Ave, the last two weeks are packed with a ton of activities. They have a walking field trip to the Goffstown Public Library to hear about summer reading. They're planning their field day. Two lucky students will be selected by raffle to ride to school in a police cruiser and a fire truck, which they're very excited about. School yearbooks are going to be distributed soon. Student council will be having their last spirit day, which will be a beach day. Today did not feel like beach weather, so I hope that it brings nice weather to us. Students will soon be stepping up to meet next year's teachers, and that will happen both at Maple and at Mountain View. And the fourth graders will have a special breakfast, and our school community at Maple will be clapping them out on the last day of school. Over at Mountain View, UNH has been in contact with Mike Lee, who is one of our technology teachers, and they have donated a giant fish tank, which is worth more than $1,000 to Mountain View, that they will be using in Mr. Lee's tech class, and they're going to be learning about beach erosion. And students are going to explore and create different types of beach erosion preventives next year, so really exciting. A special thank you to Mr. Lee. He has a great relationship with UNH, and when they have things, they call him and say, hey, what do you think about using this with your students? So a huge thank you to them. This week, all of our eighth graders at Mountain View are on their trip to the Mount Washington Cruise. So today, one team went, and then over the next two days, the other teams will go. Circus Smirkus was the artist in residence for fifth grade this year, and it was a huge hit. Students practiced circus acts such as juggling and stilt walking, and they performed their acts for their teachers and their peers. We do have Step Up Day coming to Mountain View for our incoming fifth graders that will be visiting, and our incoming seventh graders from New Boston. I believe that is on June 16th. And then just today, congratulations to the girls softball team. They won their semifinal game today, and they're advancing to the finals on Wednesday. Over at Bartlett, they, third and fourth graders, were involved in Nature's Classroom over at Saret Fields, and Mrs. Gogan got great positive feedback from students and parents alike. They also hosted two summer library assemblies just today for first and second, and third and fourth as well. Patty Pennick from the Goffstown Public Library read a story and built excitement for the library's summer reading program, which is exciting. Their after-school art club created a Bartlett art gallery in the 102-year-old wooden stairwell over at Bartlett. I was actually there today and got to see it. It looks remarkable. So thank you to Mrs. LaPlante for hosting many groups of artists and beautifying that part of the building. Mrs. Ramsdale's Garden Club has grown plants from seeds, and they are now planted in a garden in memory of one of our teachers who had an infant that passed away, so that was planted in memory. And then the fourth grade music concert will be this Wednesday. The fourth graders, under the direction of Mrs. Price, the music teacher, will be performing Bebop. All of their concerts have been well-attended by families, and in fact, the last concerts they had, they had between 50 and 70 parents and family members attend, which is a lot of people for Bartlett. So that's what's going on in the district.
Wow, thank you, Wendy. Anyone else? Commendations, good news. Go ahead, Jan.
No, administrative inquiry. A donation, you said, that was worth over $1,000. At what level does this board have to interact to accept that? Or does it? Or do we?
You don't have to, because it's not a monetary, the fact that they're donating a piece of equipment. I did check with our attorney on that. He said we didn't...
You did, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because I would love to see his reasoning, if you can make that available to us. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? Go ahead, Jenny.
I went to the co-curricular banquet. It's always been the sports banquet. I've attended many times, and they've changed it to the co-curricular banquet, and it was wonderful. I agree with you. And it's so nice to go to this banquet instead of just seeing sports people get awards. People got awards from across all of the co-curricular clubs, activities, whatever, and it was just really nice. I appreciate the change. And there were also two people who were inducted into the Hall of Fame, Dave Misshu, a former teacher and coach, and Connor Burke, who was quite an athlete as well, so it was really great. And also, congratulations to our sports teams. They're really doing great in finals this year.
Great, thanks, Jenny. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, seeing none, I'll close it. I'll open to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Hi. So come on to whichever microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. We do ask you keep your comment to less than three minutes, and we do not go into a back-and-forth dialogue.
Okay. I have just a front and back here.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll speed read.
That's okay.
My name's Kelly Traynor.
Don't speed read, you have to understand what you're saying.
My name's Kelly Traynor. I live at 11 Jason Drive in Goffstown. My middle schooler and I were surprised and disappointed to find out when class registrations opened for fall of next year that French will not be offered. I didn't recall seeing any notification from MVMS School Administration that French would no longer be offered. I did look back at all Paus newsletters from April 2022 through now and didn't find any updates or notifications to parents. The efforts to hire a French teacher were suspended, and French was officially being removed from the curriculum. Also reviewed the last year's worth of board meeting minutes and found the last mention of the issue being August of 2022. Superintendent Balky shared that a teacher had been found to pick up with eighth grade, but not for seventh. This was good information to share, but didn't close the loop or specify any intent to suspend recruitment efforts and thus programming. I since found that, five months later, the MVMS handbook was edited by the Curriculum and Education Committee for the next school year. The extent of the edit was delete French, rationale, no longer offering this course. In conversations with other parents over the past two weeks, I know I'm not the only one who was surprised to learn the program was removed from the school's curriculum entirely. When my daughter started fifth grade, we happily noticed French was offered for grades seven and eight, and being that nothing was communicated otherwise by the school, I assumed that remained unchanged. No communication for this significant change in removing not just a class, but a program, I do think is something worth communicating. From the Goffstown School Board Policies webpage, IGA Curriculum and Development, "Curriculum development must be viewed as an encompassing movement involving the total community, students, teachers, parents, working cooperatively." And, "The board will make final decisions on curriculum change. The superintendent will submit to the board recommendations developed by the curriculum committees and professional staff. The board, in reviewing evaluating curriculum, recommendations may solicit community opinion. Recommendations will be submitted to the board for consideration and adoption." Since that August 2022 meeting, in which the superintendent shared the last update, I found no further mention of discussion by the board or the CNE Subcommittee concerning the French program. I found no documentation of a recommendation being brought by the superintendent to the board for a vote. I'm aware that the board does not respond here to public comment, but for the record, I do want to at least put the question out there, if this was brought to a vote or not. No parent, including myself, no member of the board or the superintendent, will be happy with every curriculum decision that's made. I appreciate these are neither simple nor easy decisions. But when the ball seems to have been dropped with regard to transparent information sharing, and to boot, there's no record I can find of a vote being held per the policy above, it can begin to breed a lack of confidence. This particular change happened to be one that impacted my student directly, so it piqued my attention. Though I hear other parents from time to time make comments about a lack of transparency or questioning if policy was followed, unfortunately, this time I get it. Would the outcome have been different had the school and the superintendent and the board had a different approach? Maybe not, but confidence in the process and adherence to policies wouldn't be in question. And on the other hand, there may have been more awareness by the public earlier. Maybe an opportunity would have been opened for more cooperative and engaging process with various stakeholders. Maybe an unconventional, not perfect yet feasible plan could have been set in motion, for example, a certified remote instructor and an in-school class monitor for onsite. Something that may not have been ideal, but could have kept the subject offering afloat and keeping kids on track to reach advanced French. At the same time, it could have built up community and stakeholder confidence even if the efforts fell short of the goal. I would like to make it clear that I do appreciate there are ongoing complex challenges with filling vacant teaching positions, and these are not unique to one school, one district, or the state. That said, clearly, very important conversations were being held between administrators, which were moving in the direction of ending the program, and none of this made its way to parents and community members in any formal way. This experience is a discouraging one. A part of me said, why bother coming and addressing my dissatisfaction today, or even asking more questions? Because it won't change anything for next year's seventh and eighth graders. On the surface, this may look like a moment in time issue, though it's really not. It will inevitably impact the high school curriculum years from now, when our seventh and eighth graders are juniors and seniors in high school. If they choose to pick up French as freshmen, they can graduate as Level 4 seniors, while this year's seniors just completed Level 5 and in some cases, AP French. It's important for me to be here despite not being able to undo what's been done, because it can happen again, and I hope that the next time a subject or a program is at risk in this way, communication and transparency are improved, and that policy is followed, which I'm still not clear is the case here. I'll leave you with one final plug for foreign language study. Language education is more than just learning vocabulary and grammar. It's a gateway to diverse cultures, a tool for global understanding, a foundation for personal and academic growth. It prepares students for an interconnected world, equipping them with vital skills that foster cultural understanding and sensitivity and enhance their future academic and career paths. It boosts many cognitive functions, including but not limited to sharper memory and improved problem-solving ability. For all of these reasons and more, I do hope that Goffstown will be able to bring back a more robust language program for our students still coming up through the elementary grades. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much. That was very well written and said. Can we keep that for our minutes?
Sure.
Can you give it to Wendy?
Yeah, we'll just pass it down. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting if you like, but thank you for coming tonight. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close. So we are here to have our math presentation that we've been waiting for, for a long time, so come on up.
This is Kohler.
I didn't have her in my class.
Mrs. Gogan, if you don't mind, as well, to the table. So first of all, thank you to Kim Bolduc, Maple Avenue teacher, Katie Parker, teacher from Bartlett, and Mrs. Gogan, principal over at Bartlett, for being here this evening. I'm going to talk a little bit about the background and process that we went through for bringing a presentation to you this evening and asking for approval of a new elementary math curriculum. However, I'm not going to talk about the product. I think it's important for the board and for our families at home to hear from the people that have been using the product, rather than for me to talk about it, so that any questions that the board has and to get their perspective, I think, is critical. I'm also going to let you know, prior to this meeting, I sent out a very giant PowerPoint presentation that I had used over at CNE. That was an over 90-minute presentation, and I am going to try to compact that presentation down, because I know that we don't have 90 minutes to spend together. I also provided all of you, there's a yellow folder at your chairs. The shortened PowerPoint is in there. There's also a copy of a teacher edition, just so you can see some of the pieces that the teachers are going to talk about that have to do with the program itself. A parent survey that was done, and I'm only going to talk and do slides on a few of the questions, but I provided the board all of the answers that parents gave, except for the identifiable information. You're going to notice a couple are missing, and that was because they were identifiable. And then also just an overview of the program components that are available online. So those are the items that are in your yellow folder. So to get started, our math committee, Mr. Balky, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, was made up of 24 members, and it was both Goffstown and New Boston that were involved in this process. Our representatives included teachers from K to 5 from all of our buildings, special education teachers and interventionists, our technology integration specialist was a part of it, and then admin at all levels, and that includes administration from the high school. And that was important, because as part of our work, we were looking at vertical alignment. As we started this work, I think it's important for the community and for the board to hear, why leave everyday math, which has been a staple in our community for a long time? As the board is aware, over quite a few years now, we've been talking about some of the deficiencies with our current mathematics program at the elementary level. Things like lack of fact fluency that are a part of the program, the teachers talking about the lack of robust vocabulary that are a part of it, and the struggle that our students have when they're moving from everyday math into big ideas. The digital platform is in need of some serious updating, and as we were looking at new programming, the new everyday math curriculum is not coming out until 2025. And we felt we were not in a position to wait until 2025 to see what that was going to look like, knowing that there were a lot of deficiencies that our staff, and quite honestly, our parents have voiced to us over the years. And like I had mentioned, there's been a tough transition from fifth grade of using everyday math into sixth grade. So for our process, our process actually started during COVID. We did a lot of research on different mathematics programs that were out there. From there, our committee of 24 chose four programs to look at. We researched them, we saw presentations from the vendors, and we saw four presentations. Those were Reveal Mathematics, Math in Focus, Eureka, I'm sorry, Math 2, and then Math in You, which is a Big Ideas product. I will mention that I'm going to be saying the term Math in You a lot. Big Ideas is something that our board is familiar with, because it is the program that we're currently using in grade six through Algebra II. That product has recently been bought out by Cengage National Geographic, which is why you're going to hear the name change. That was part of the deal when they bought the product, that they need to change the name. So we had our presentations, we got to see print materials, which included all of our teacher editions and student editions. From there, we looked at local, in New Hampshire, SAS scores, teacher usability, customer service, parent feedback on all four of those products. So we reached out to other local districts to get feedback, not only from administrators, but from teachers as well, to figure out where we were going to go. We then decided, and we had a rubric that we used to narrow everything down, to pilot two products that we've been piloting since the end of winter, and those were Reveal Math and Math in You, which is the Big Ideas product. We were provided professional development for our teachers that were piloting both of those products, to make sure that when they were going to use the product, they understood the why behind it. So we didn't just hand them and say, oh, here you go, good luck with your pilot. We brought in consultants to be able to work with our teachers, so that they could get and kind of hit the ground running with those two pilot programs. I'll also remind the board that we were able to get both of those pilots free of charge. Normally, there was a cost associated with piloting a product, and we were able to use some of our salesmanship to get both of those for free. Towards the end of our pilot this spring, we gave a parent survey to all of the classrooms that were involved in both of those pilots, so that we could get feedback right from parents. If you look at the questions that are in your yellow folder, you'll see that we asked questions about parents and how they felt about the product. It also had them ask how their student felt about the product. We were really careful because of the use of surveys. Clearly, our teachers were getting feedback from their kids throughout their lessons, but to hear from parents and letting parents have that conversation at home with their student and saying, what do you feel about this? Do you like the content? Do you like the digital pieces of it? And having that at home. We also did a side-by-side comparison. We had Dr. Athena Chisholm look at a second-grade student edition for both Reveal Mathematics and for Math in You, and did a side-by-side, and looked at readability. Throughout all of our committee work, one of the things that kept coming up was, we want to make sure that the language and the vocabulary in there is not to a point where we're trying to figure out as educators, is this a math problem if a student is struggling, or is this a reading problem that we're kind of missing because of the vocabulary that's being used? That's not said, the math vocabulary, that's critical, but the other words that were in there. Our kids getting lost in the words, and that's what's hurting their math, was really what we looked at. So Athena did a side-by-side of that. We also had our high school mathematics team do a side-by-side of the fifth grade book as well for Reveal and for Big Ideas, and to look at that and say, what is your suggestion, thinking about where we want our students to progress through high school, what is going to be the best to get them there? So they did a side-by-side comparison as well. So our committee recommendation that we're bringing you today is the adoption of Math in You by Big Ideas. I'll share with you some feedback from two surrounding districts that are currently using the Big Ideas program. First of all, one of the districts went, just like we are, going from everyday math to Big Ideas. They also left that program because they had concerns about fact fluency and some of the other things that I talked about at the beginning of the presentation. The other district left Envisions to move to Big Ideas, and the interesting thing with talking with that district, they actually had multiple years left on their math contract with Envisions and chose to leave it early, even though they had paid for it. So they left early to move to this program.
Wendy, what's spiraling?
So talking about not going to mastery and kind of jumping around from subject to subject was one of the concerns that they talked about.
Okay.
Okay? One of the things, and the teachers are going to talk about this, and I do have an example as well that I'll share with you, is in Big Ideas, there is this QR code on the bottom of the pages, and you actually saw it in that flipbook that I was able to send the board. And what's nice is a parent can take their cell phone, can put the QR code and take a picture of it, and it brings up a lesson on how to work with your student with that example. So of course, we have Schooled G, we're going to have all of that online access, but for some parents, just picking up their phone and being able to scan that QR code, and again, I'll show an example in a few minutes, and being able to see how to solve a problem so a parent feels like they're more able to help their child at home, is something that both of the districts talked about that was a huge win as they moved to this program. One of the things I will mention that both the districts talked about, they didn't always love the online games. I think it's important to share with you the feedback that was not as positive as well, that they thought that that was something that they would hope that would be beefed up in the future, but they, as districts, supplemented with other online games as they felt necessary. Their in-district assessments results when they move from those other two programs to Big Ideas increased. I will mention to you that both of these districts already had very strong New Hampshire SAS scores, so they really didn't see an increase in those, because they were already really high. They also said their teachers bought in, their parents bought in, and neither district has buyer's remorse, which I think is important. Our feedback from Dr. Chisholm, in looking at that side-by-side and looking at readability, hands down, she thought Math in You was the better choice. She had some significant concerns about some of the language that was in the Reveal Math, thinking that some of our students who struggle with especially decoding would have a hard time with some of the language that's used, because it's really higher-order thinking vocabulary that was in the Reveal Mathematics curriculum. In looking at it from the high school perspective, one of the things that they loved is they felt that the Math in You series appears to give students more practice with math sense. They liked it because they felt it was authentic and focused on advancing depth of knowledge and really building towards mastery. And when they're thinking about getting students to that higher-level math classes at the high school, they were looking at it under that umbrella. How are we going to get our students to where we want them to go? They also thought there was a lot of rigor in there, but not at the vocabulary level. They liked the math rigor of it. They also really liked, they thought that it was pleasant to look at, it was inviting for kids. They also really liked the flashcards. There were flashcards for vocabulary that are embedded into the journal. They're also in the digital print at home for parents to be able to see, and they liked that as well. As I mentioned to you, Brian, you can go to the next slide, thank you. In your folder is the complete survey in there, but there are a couple of things that I want to be sure that parents see at home. We had 40 parent responses from across Goffstown and New Boston, and out of the 40, 29 were positive when they asked about overall presentation of the program. Six were somewhat positive, five were neutral. Not one of the comments came in as negative, which I think is important to share. When we asked parents to talk about how their student feels about the program overall, so again, the other one was about parents' feedback, this is about students. Again, out of 40, 30 were positive, six were somewhat positive, three were neutral, and one was somewhat negative. And again, that's coming from students. The last thing that I'll share, and I think this one is probably the most powerful part of the survey, we asked parents if they noticed any changes in their students' attitude towards math since they've used Math in You. 31 parents said that they said that their student were more interested and had a better attitude towards mathematics with using that program. Six said they really didn't notice a change, but 31, which I think is pretty telling. I'll also mention that we did that same survey with Reveal Mathematics. I'll also mention that we did that same survey with Reveal Mathematics. That survey was also positive. However, I will share that when we asked that same question about the students' attitude towards math since using Reveal, only 15 parents said that their child seemed more interested and had a better quote "attitude" towards math, and 24 did not notice a difference. So I just mentioned that, so that you can kind of get that side-by-side comparison. So with Math in You, and the teachers are going to really get into more depth about this, they talk about exploring, learning, reasoning, and applying. And in your packet, if you're looking at kind of that copy of the teacher edition that I provided you, the teachers are going to talk about how they're able to do all of those things, what they do for the dig-ins, how they're getting that conceptual understanding, how they're getting that procedural process in place, getting that key vocabulary into the lessons, how they're going to use the online support videos. And I will share that throughout the pilot, the teachers did not have access to all of the digital tools that we're going to have available in, come August. They didn't have them all. They will when we start school, so they're going to have even more ability to be able to get things, not only for their own professional development, but also to help with students and parents in helping to provide them more support outside of the classroom. They talk about taking skills and starting to applying them, and then applying them to word problems, and then connecting it to the real world. The teachers are going to talk about, and again, if you look at that student edition, things like Lori's notes or Nick's notes that are in there. There is embedded professional development that is in the teacher edition. It also gives teachers things to think about when they're instructing that is built right into the program, which is a really nice feature to have. I know Kim and Katie will talk a little bit about how they used that teacher manual to be able to help with, wow, I never thought about that. They're going to talk a little bit about career connections. Mr. Bulkey, yep? Let's see if it plays.
Georgia's advancing.
Yep, should play.
Let's sail over to Dicard. Dicard, what do you have for us today?
Dick, today I'm a zoologist. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Jamaica, and I'm a zoologist.
Jamaica, thanks for being here.
No problem.
Jamaica, what is a zoologist?
A zoologist is a scientist that studies animals and the natural world.
What do you do as a zoologist?
As a zoologist, I study the characteristics of animals, their behavior, and how they interact with their ecosystem.
What's an ecosystem?
An ecosystem is like the animal's own little world that they live in.
What's your favorite animal?
Do you want to play this whole thing?
So, the part that it's coming to is it brings all of the math concepts in. So they talk about how many wallabies can live in one area, and they talk about square footage, they talk about all of that math vocabulary, and do it in a way that they talk about careers, so students are making that connection to mathematics in the real world and thinking about careers that perhaps they've never thought of. In a way that they're bringing kind of that engagement in with talking about animals, but as the video goes further, and it was in the PowerPoint that I also sent all of you, it really does bring the mathematics in. And Kim, in a few minutes, will talk about something that she did in her classroom with a loan officer, and she can kind of bring that to life as well. Mr. Bulkey, you can actually go to the next slide. One of the things I had just talked about was that QR code in the student journal. Mr. Bulkey, could you click on the yellow? So when you scan the QR code... Yes, please.
You want to make eight dreamcatchers. You have 30 feathers. You tie three feathers to each dreamcatcher. How many feathers do you have left?
So I'm not sure why the picture's not coming up on the screen.
Understand the problem.
It probably opened in another window.
Is he watching it?
No, you want to make eight.
Are you watching it? Is it on your screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Bulkey was actively engaged in watching that.
Didn't realize we're not seeing it.
Mr. Bulkey clearly is engaged in that. I have no idea why that video wouldn't come up, but like I had said, it's a QR code, and it actually brings the problem up on the, on the parent's phone, and it shows how to solve it. So it puts all of the numbers in, so that you're able to have those conversations at home. Some of our older students who perhaps have cellphones, they could do it at home on their own if they have access to an iPad or an iPhone at home as well, but beyond having that digital access at home through SchoolAG, it's kind of that on-demand QR code in order to get feedback directly on those lessons that are coming home.
And for clarity, it doesn't have to be an iPhone.
It does not. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Clutter. Yes, it does not. Okay? So, again, like I had mentioned, I think the most important part of this presentation is for you to hear directly from our teachers. And in the next couple of slides, they're going to talk about, and again, they're not going to use the slide deck, they're going to talk about their experiences, but they're going to talk about what that digital access is going to mean. They're going to talk about those career connections and engagement. They're going to talk about differentiation. And then obviously, it does connect into SchoolAG, which I've mentioned a few times. And I'll also mention that this does meet our local standards for mathematics that we have in place, and also our state standards as well. So if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, they're going to talk about a few of those things. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kim and Katie to talk about their experiences with the program, and then Mrs. Gogan, if you have anything else you'd like to add as well.
Heather, can I ask a question as a baseline?
Sure, go ahead, Dan.
How many students were actually exposed to Math in You? I know we got 40 responses, and you said 40 responses from parents. I don't know if it's one child and two parents, or... So, how many, yeah?
How many total? So, if you give me a few minutes, I can give, I can give you that when they're done their presentation.
Cool. I wanted to do a little math.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm going to go steal my computer, so I can tell you that.
That'd be great, thank you.
I'll get started. So I had a unique experience with this, and I was able to pilot every, sorry, I almost said everyday math, pilot Math in You in my second-grade classroom at Maple, but my son, Johnny, was at Bartlett, and he was part of the pilot in first grade. And so it was really neat where he was coming home with the homework, and we were able to talk about Math in You. He did tell me I did not know what Math in You was, because I'm a parent, and I don't teach that.
Let me help you out, that does not get better.
No.
Spoiler alert.
So, in the beginning of the year, I'd ask, what did you do in school today? Nothing. What did you do in math? Nothing. What did you learn? I don't know, Mom, we just did math. But now, when I ask him, what did you do, Johnny? Oh, well, Mom, V, verticy, right here, the point right here is verticy. I'm like, you're in first grade, and you understand vertices and sides, and this program takes things a bit further, and we are working towards mastery instead of that spiral that we talked about before, like, we're going to talk about time in September, and then again in December, and then maybe once again in June, and kids were not reaching mastery. One of the really nice things that Wendy mentioned was those QR codes. I think parents are really going to enjoy being able to see, what does the lesson look like? What do they want from us in this homework assignment? Because many times, parents are like, what do you want? What, what, what's the answer supposed to be? And here, this gives them a really nice example through a video, and the QR code might outline the skill, the concept, the algorithm for that day, and it's using the same vocabulary that their children are using during the day with us. So instead of getting those questions, like, Mrs. Boldak, can I have an everyday math lesson? I used to bring parents in at night and actually teach them partial sums, or teach them the everyday math sort of way of doing things, and now we're sort of back to the traditional method with some... So I taught, the first unit I taught was two-digit addition, and I thought, there's no way I'm going to be able to teach partial sums, compensation, and the traditional method in two weeks. And they got it. They really got it. It was pretty incredible. And based on our test scores, the children really are grasping it, and it's not just that they're grasping these concepts, but they enjoy it. They really enjoy it. So I'll go to, I'll talk a little bit about the career videos that Wendy brought up. We're bringing in real-life careers and examples that children can make connections to. So Wendy came in to see a lesson that I was teaching, and I did not have the video to show the students at the time, and we were talking about loan officers. And I'm like, loan officers? How can this be interesting? But it was.
Scott's interested right now. You've got Scott.
They loved it. So the loan officer conversation, and I'm like, okay, how, there were obviously wonderful questioning, like, the dig-in had great questions that I could use for, for the kiddos, but I was like, Mrs. Boldak just bought a truck. How, did I, do you think I had that much money in my bank account? They're like, no. I'm like, no, I definitely don't. So I needed to have the money to pay for it, and somebody gave me a loan, gave me the money, and I'm paying it back every month. And these conversations went throughout each of the lessons in the chapter, and in the end, there was a performance task. And the performance tasks asked them, it said, you borrowed $100, I don't know, maybe for a skateboard or something, you borrowed $100, you start paying in March, you pay $8 a month. When will you finish paying off the loan? And at the end, what will that last payment be? And you, all of their eyes were just huge, like, oh my goodness, this is a lot. First kid, what comes after March? I'm like, okay. But now we're bringing calendar into it, and we're, we're really, they're thinking, they're really thinking. So I think the career connections are very helpful. We've done loan officers, referees, what have you done?
We did a landscape architect.
Sure, go for it.
That was the one my third-grade class most recently did, was a landscape architect. And we talked about what, like, landscape is, what an architect might do, but they've never heard of that as a career put together. So we spent some time really watching the video, digging in, what can this landscape architect do as a career, and how does that tie into math? One of the really great things about this program is it has students thinking about careers in a different way, not just the typical careers you might, like, police officer, firefighter, teacher. I would never think that in our math program, we would be talking about landscape architects. But what's nice, too, is that there's a whole day at the beginning of each chapter where you just focus on the career exploration and the vocab. So Jerry came into my class one day when I was introducing a new unit, and all we did was talk about being a landscape architect and then the vocab card. So students were able to cut out their cards, we kind of did a bingo game with them, but the Big Ideas curriculum has it, where that is a full day, a full math block of just looking at, what is this career? How can you incorporate math into it in their everyday life? And then the vocab. Because with everyday math, we're having to teach kids vocab words, but it's not revisited throughout the unit. So sometimes they may catch on to a vocab word and use it throughout, but there's no lesson on that. So I think when we were looking at curriculums, it was really important for us to make sure, whatever curriculum we wanted to adopt, that we were helping these kids learn math language. Especially in third grade, where our students start to take the New Hampshire State Assessment, we're seeing the same vocabulary. So I'm excited that in the coming years, these students may already have background of some of these terms, rather than raising their hand when they're taking the SAS test, asking what this word means, me not being able to help them with that and just kind of thinking, oh, I hope they get it. So we were able to, with the landscape architect, spend a full day with the vocab, and then the kids were able to design their own playground or amusement park. And the video had them thinking about, okay, if you go to a park, you don't want the swings next to the monkey bars. Why could that be a bad idea? And the kids, oh my gosh, you would get hurt, you, you know, this, they had no idea that someone's job is to think about that. And then if you have this many trees that you need to plant, how far apart should they be? So it's all things they knew, but they never knew how they could tie them in together. And that was just one example with one unit, so I can't imagine across grade levels as they continue, how many different careers they're going to be exposed to.
Right, because we have 13 chapters in second grade, and we're only able to touch upon three, four of them. And you figure, that's 13 different careers that they get to look at, because typically, you don't, they don't get that opportunity, so it's really nice. Was there anything?
Katie and Kim, would you talk a little bit about the differentiation abilities that the program offers? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, okay. In the journal, everything is in one journal, which is really nice. We don't have to fumble, especially with the younger kids of, okay, take out this journal, take out that journal, now go back to this one. Everything is in one journal, and it gives students an ample amount of practice. And the way it's laid out is really great, because in the beginning of each lesson in...
Do they have the lesson pages?
Yep. In your packet, you'll have an example of a lesson, and it starts off with a dig-in, and that's the time where we're trying to hook students into each lesson. So during this, instead of me being up at the board, we're on the rug, we're using manipulatives, we're using the whiteboards. If you come in, we're on the rug, they're all around me, and we are just having a math talk. It's a 10- to 15-minute time to just hook them, to give them a little preview about what's to come. And from there, the journal is broken up into different layers of practice. And the idea is that it gives you plenty of examples, and then as students continue on throughout the lesson, they are working towards the mastery level. So as you get towards the end of a lesson, you start to see where you can really differentiate with your students. The questions, they're not just fill-in-the-blank questions. Some are word problems, some have matching, some have graphs. An example of connecting back to real life, one of my students, we were reading a word problem, and it had a graph about, how does your dog like dog treats? Do they, do they like cheese? Do they like peanut butter? Do they like dog bones? And my students know that I love my dog, and so they'll say, Mrs. Parker, which one would Max want? And so they're able to kind of connect this into their real life. And then as you continue on in the lesson pages, and the instructors also told us, not every student is expected to take on all of these problems in the journal. And that was really refreshing to hear, because we have a lot of students that can do that, and they can be successful. We have students where, with my support, they can be successful. And then we have some students where they're not going to be able to complete the pages to their entirety, and I don't want them to feel defeated because they can't do it. So if you look along the side of the lesson, there is a section where it specifically says, for emerging students, we would suggest you do these problems. For students that are showing proficiency, have them do these problems. So there's a natural, built-in differentiation that the teacher doesn't even have to do. The curriculum has already done it for us. And I used it quite a bit, and just to the basic of, you guys do these numbers, you guys do these numbers, and my students didn't really say, why do I have to do that one? We, they know in my classroom that they're going to get what they need to be successful. That's kind of the culture we've worked towards. And so they said, okay, Mrs. Parker, we'll work on those. You guys come to the table with me, you do this part independently, and they're all able to work on the same skills, just at different levels, and it's the level they need. So the program has done a really nice job of differentiating within the lessons. And then the online components also have a Tier Two and Tier Three differentiation piece. We did not have access to that, but we did see it, and I think that will be really helpful for teachers to give.
Absolutely. And as part of that as well, I know that Katie talked about kind of those emerging and those proficient learners, but there's information in there for your advanced students as well, because we know that in an elementary classroom, you've got all levels of learners in there. So to be able to have that information readily available for teachers, I think, is really important. Like they said, the digital pieces, they're going to be able to assign things, and everything matches the student journal. And I think that that's really important, because in some cases, in some of the programs we looked at, what parents were seeing at home looked different than what the students had in their journal, and these all match, which is, I think, really important for our parents.
Right. So today's lesson, we were working on geometry, and there was the student page that we did in class, some of it together, some of it independently, and the following page was their homework sheet. I ripped it out right in front of them, said, okay, put this in your mailbox, and it mirrored what we did in class. So many times, parents would email or call and say, Mrs. Boldak, my child said they didn't do this today. And I said, well, it did look very different from what I taught in class today, because the homework was so very different from what I taught in class, even though it was part of the same lesson. And now it mirrors it. So the kids are like, oh, yeah, I remember this exact thing, exactly when I was in class today. So that's really nice.
Dan, I did do the math for you. There was 117 students that were involved in the Math in You pilot.
Just with the Math in You?
Just with...
Because there were two, right?
There were. So I thought, I apologize if I misunderstood. Specifically for the Math in You, there were 117 families that were involved, yes.
Yes, that's, and so... Yes, that's, and so you figure about a third of them responded.
Which is honestly great for a survey that we got that many families responding.
That's what I was looking for, to see if we had a representation for response.
Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? Does C and E want to add? Because you guys got this before. Go ahead, Ellen.
Just for the board, and thank you staff for coming tonight. I was fortunate enough to be sitting there with a couple of the board members at C and E. And I've done this for a while, and I've never seen a group of teachers more excited about something they were presenting to this committee. I mean, it was contagious. They were so excited about what they had been using with the kids and the difference it made in their students' learning. Really impressed me. Being, having been a math teacher for a while, I, I know the shortcomings of various programs, but and this one, I did study it. I was the one that went into the SAU and looked through the books and read them and everything. And this program, I mean, I would love to be able to teach it. It's, it's there. It's what you would need as a teacher. There's the materials there that the kids need. There's sufficient practice. I mean, I, I used to have to augment everything from here to kingdom come with another program. And this, I don't think it would be necessary to do that unless a student needed something more. I was very impressed with it, and the committee did vote to recommend it to this board. So I, I hope the board will consider it positively.
Thank you, Ellen. Ginny, Rheta, did you guys want to add anything? No?
I have to repeat, they were, the teachers were so excited about this. And I think if they're that excited about it, they bring that to the students. And it was delightful really to hear you guys, you know, and I'm, I'm excited for the students working with you on this program because you really do feel comfortable with it.
Can I just interject real quick? I think this is important. The reason we're so excited about it is because we're seeing our students be successful and excited about it as well. And so when, it's kind of the same trickle effect. When we're excited, the board gets excited. But when we're seeing these kids in front of us where math is hard for a lot of them, when they know that they have strategies and tools where even if they can't be successful right away, that the program is a whole chapter on the same thing, but it just adds to it. So there's time to go back so we can get them feeling confident. And as a student, growing up, I was not a math student. So now to come full circle, teaching math and being here to present to you guys, it's really nice knowing that our students are excited about this.
Absolutely. Wendy, I saw your hand up.
Yeah. One of the things I'll mention, just from Ellen's comment, is when we presented at C and E, we also had two teacher representatives from New Boston that were there as well. So I just want to mention that that is a unified voice that they heard. And I think that's important because as we're talking about transition, the difficulty that it is if one school is using a different program than another that that creates for a teacher. So having New Boston and Goffstown with that unified voice looking at this program, I think, is really important. I also will mention, this program, and again, you're hearing, you know, we're asking for you to, to adopt this. This is the vehicle. Our teachers are the ones that are instructing. So as we're looking at professional development moving forward, this program is not magic, right? It's how do we make sure that our teachers have everything they need to be able to implement this successfully? What, what other professional development do we need to give them? So I mentioned that because as we come into budget season next year, you may see me asking for a little bit more money in our professional development line, knowing that this is something that we need to work on. We've seen our math scores in this district. We have room for growth. And this is something that it's the perfect timing with bringing a new program on that we're looking at our own instruction and how can we be better instructors of mathematics? So I just bring that up as, as a point of interest as well.
Thank you, Wendy. And Ginny, hang on one second. Go ahead.
I really appreciated the career component of this program. Because as a, a parent and a grandparent, you hear from students all the time, you know, math, what the heck? We're never going to use it again. Why do we have to learn all this stuff? Because we're never going to use it again. And I think this program really shows students that you are going to use it again. And in all of these different places, you're going to use it. So you really do have to pay attention and, and learn it. And I think throughout the whole curriculum, it shows students that math is important.
Go ahead, Brian.
First of all, I wanted to thank Mrs. Parker and Mrs. Bolduc for being here. Two wonderful teachers. We're so fortunate and lucky to have both of them here representing Bartlett. Mrs. Gogan has been spectacular. She's kind of quietly sitting. She's like proud mama bear here. I recognize this. I wanted to just make sure the board remembers and to point out to the community, this is about a $400,000 project that we are looking to use grant money for. So this is a project that when we got our ESAR funds, which were some of the COVID relief funds, that one of the very first items we did was we socked away 400,000 of this for a new math program. So this is coming at no cost impact to the local taxpayer.
Thank you. Go ahead, Shane.
This sounds like a really great program, and I like that it builds to mastery, unlike everyday math often. And Wendy, you probably read my mind a little bit because I was going to ask about the professional development piece of it.
Yes.
But you guys have been doing it. So how, how were you trained? And do you feel like that training will be kind of very easily implemented to your colleagues? I guess that's my question.
No, absolutely. We had a few training sessions. The first training session, we didn't have the online component, so we were really just using the book. And to be 100% honest, that's really all we need, especially with the younger grades. I know with second grade, we're not one to one, so we don't have computers for every child. And so what's really important is that we have a great workbook. And so I was able to just display the workbook on the Promethean board and use that. And then we had another professional development opportunity where we, we were able to take a look at ADEA, which is the online components. So in all, we, we really only had, I don't know, like maybe.
Probably a full day when push comes to shove.
Professional development.
Yeah. One of the things Shane will also mention is if the board approves this, this purchase, we have put in the monies for the professional development so that we would have professional development for all of our staff, including our interventionists and our special ed teachers that will be impacted this summer. So they'll have time with the program before we start in September, which I think is really important.
And the other piece about that, the interventionist in Title I, they have access to all of the grade levels. So if they're working with third graders, but they're really at the first grade level, they have access to first grade, second grade, third grade. And often they're pulled out of, of class and they're working on something different because it's IP goals. The kids are very confused because they're working on multiplication in class, three different ways in one week. And then they're pulled with their special educator. They work on something else. The sense of relief from these students when they're in class, like, we're all doing multiplication here, there, everywhere, we're doing multiplication. It was just fascinating. And the teachers are so good about just saying, don't worry, if you don't get it today, we'll get it tomorrow. I really liked the rigor of it. I really liked how the students were acting like mathematicians. At all levels, third and fourth grade, they were doing great. But at first and second grade, I really saw the difference with the readability, the vocabulary. The kids were using the vocabulary. It happened to be, I think it was your son, actually, that was, I don't know if it was him. It was, it was somebody else in the first grade class I was, I was watching, and they were doing hands on with shapes. And they said, here's, here's a shape with parallel lines. Now you need to, like, they actually had physical blocks. Now you need to add another block and talk about it with your partners. And what does that make? And one of the kids, then they had to write about it. Now, this is first grade. They're writing, some know their letter sounds, some don't. And one of them was writing that now there was an extra vertices, and this is why. So I, I asked the other students if they knew, and they all knew what a vertices was. They were like mathematicians. And then in the third grade, there they are out on the playground, looking, where are our, you know, where are the slides? How did they design it? Why can our, our kids go all the way around the playground without touching the ground? They're just looking at the world through math eyes. Instead of saying, which a lot of us do, I don't have a math brain. My mom doesn't like math. I'm not good at math. All of a sudden, it really is Math and You. They are part of the math. And I think it's magic. I really like it.
I just want to thank you all and thank you for your willingness to pilot it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
It's a big step.
It's very user friendly.
It looks like it.
It, it really is. And the manuals aren't too overwhelming. There aren't a million different places to find print resources. It's all just right there, which I think for newer teachers and veteran teachers, it'll make things quite easy to get going in September, hopefully.
Awesome.
When I was talking to our first grade teacher that piloted, she had a substitute one day, and she left the math lesson for them. And the feedback she got was, wow, I felt like I could be successful as a substitute coming in, not knowing where you left off the day prior or where you're going. I can deliver this content to students. And I think that's really big. Rather than teachers just leaving fluffy lesson plans, they can leave the content and feel confident delivering it to students. Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm a bad lover of beer, but Katie's dad is here.
Well, he should know his daughter's an excellent teacher.
Absolutely. Don't cry, Dad. I didn't know he was coming.
That's wonderful.
You had your hand up.
I was going to make a motion.
Great. Okay. Well, I want to make sure, does anybody else have any question, comments on the math program? Scott, because we discussed the cost in A and F, how do you want to handle a motion?
Well, I think, I think the motions are, are probably two different ones. But one is just, you know, accepting that this is going to be the curriculum, the math curriculum going forward. And by the way, like loan officer, you had me at that one. Never heard of that. That's cool. On the second one, in terms of the grant itself, so I, Wendy and I worked on the grant in the grant management system for the state. Brian approved it. So we're just waiting for the state to just kind of do that obligatory sign off. It does qualify for that 20%, which you need for student remediation. So we're well beyond what, you know, what's needed in terms of that requirement for the ESAR three grant. But, but essentially, you know, I think, I think the motion would just, would just simply be to, you know, accept, you know, or use ESAR two funds, which you kind of have already. So it's kind of, I don't know, I mean, I've already, we've kind of done the work. It's really more accepting the
The program.
The program itself. And I will share with you that the cost, although it was funny because I remember when we did this, Brian, like almost, it feels like it was forever ago.
It was two years ago.
Brian, right. And we were setting all of these different monetary amounts for what we were going to do with ESAR. Brian's like, put, put 400,000 aside. And Wendy just did a phenomenal job in terms of getting all these things. Yeah, you negotiated really well. So all in, this is with the
With PD.
With the professional development, manipulatives, and shipping and handling, which is not, yeah, that's a cost too. 341,103, which is, you know, so we got a little bit, you know, did it well within that 400,000.
And that's paid professional summer days for teachers, not just the consultant time that's added in that cost. It's all in there.
So I thought that was like one of the best presentations. Seriously, it was awesome. I was so engaged. And Wendy, you've done like just such tremendous work on this. I just wanted to thank you too. As being a business administrator, like you pretty much handed me a really nicely packaged, took me like an hour to do this whole thing. You're just, you're just awesome.
Well, I appreciate that feedback. Honestly, I just facilitated it. The teachers, they did everything. They were, they were phenomenal. And the amount of work, of hours outside of just the teaching and learning the curriculum, having those collegial conversations with the other folks that were piloting the other product, having observations of administrators coming in, people that were still using everyday math, coming in to see those different products, to have those conversations. The time was a lot. So I'm very appreciative of everybody that was involved because it was all them. I'll be honest with you.
You know, and I will say that, I think for, I think it was like seventh grade, they do have business administrator, I think, as the career. I'm just not making a plug.
Jared had his hand up. Go ahead, Jared.
Just as a question, did the C and E subcommittee vote to approve to bring this to the full board?
Yes.
Yes.
We did. Okay.
All right. So go ahead, Dan.
So Scott?
One second, Lil.
Since the funding is from ESAR, we need approval from ESAR, you, you indicate?
So what happens is it is pending the state's approval. I will share with you that I have contacted the state on multiple occasions, not even, last one was about a month and a half ago or so. This is going to get approved. It clearly is within the parameters of ESAR.
Sure.
It's just a matter, Dan, it's just a matter of getting the official stamp of approval. So.
Okay. What, what I was hoping that, but it's not actually physically approved. I was wondering if it made sense because we make a motion to go this way, and for some crazy reason it doesn't. And if we don't do it pending the approval, then we've just spent general funds.
Contingent.
It'll be a contingent motion based upon final approval by the state.
Thank you, Dan. All right, Lil had her hand up.
Yeah, I just, I just want to have a quick shout out. As my former second grade teacher, I just really love and appreciate Mrs. Bolduc. She really like changed my life forever, truly. One of my favorite teachers. And I just like love and appreciate you so much. So thank you.
Jared, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to accept the C and E's recommendation to approve the Math and You curriculum for full deployment, contingent upon ESAR grants being approved by the state.
Perfect. Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second? By Ellen, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
That would be nine, zero, zero. Just using that.
Nine, zero, zero. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Staying, but you're welcome to go home.
No, please go home. Please go home. Thank you for being here, Mr. Parker.
Yes. Okay, so moving on, approving our May 15 school board meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look at them? Anybody see anything of content that needs to be changed or spelling or?
Moved to approve in the 15th minutes.
All right, Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, committee reports. A and F.
A and F met this evening. We
I'm sorry, Dan. I was, I was hoping, because Megan was like way down on the, okay, cool.
Yeah, I'm, I, you and I are in the same way. She's been waiting. I was going to ask the chair if we could do this.
Yes. Megan, come on up.
Where are we going on the show?
So we're going to the food service update.
The food service update first.
And there's a piece of paper in your packet. Hi, Megan.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Math sounds exciting.
Food is more exciting.
I was one of those kids in fourth grade who missed a lot of recess because my fourth grade teacher taught multiplication by a record. And it would say two times two, and you would have to write down the answer. Yes. I missed a lot of recess.
But you have a one pager from me, so hopefully it won't take up too much of your time. We'll start at the top with the, that topic of the one lunch, which I'm really proud to say the staff has kind of cracked it in terms of line times, menu ideas. We opened up the snack shack area that had been closed. So now we have one, two, three, four areas for students to get food at lunch. And that has helped as well. And Mr. McBride has been gracious enough to, and Carol Smith has also been gracious enough to be moving out of her room, which is just down from the gym. And we will be opening up the GHS, the Grizzly Cave in the fall. And we're super excited about that because we're going to have it open at breakfast as well. Because our breakfast, we don't do a lot of breakfast. Part of it, I think, is because where we're located, we're, you know, ways off. This is more central. And we're working on a menu, which will include smoothies, smoothie bowls, a hot entree, all of the things that we have now, and then adding on some items. As one of my staff members said, maybe we could become like a Dunkin' Donuts type. Because we have found some blended coffee drinks that will fit within all of our parameters as well. They won't be this tall. They'll be this tall. But there are things that can fit actually into our breakfast program as well. So every student can have access to that regardless of income. So we're excited about that because that's one of the things we try to keep in mind when we do bring in new things, that it's not just an all card item, but it's something that we can incorporate into meals so that any student can get access to that item. And the other part that we're, I'm super excited about, as Lily knows, because I had a two way a 2:00 AM brain idea before I went and met with student council, and we're going to be starting our first ever snack, which is our Student Nutrition Advisory Council. And we're looking to start that up probably in the fall, maybe meet three to four times a year. Not a huge commitment, but just a little bit of something, a way for us to get some student feedback. Because we know surveys are tough to do, and they're complicated, and this actually gives us a way to have some better student interaction. So we're super excited for that. And we will be, Scott and I discussed this, current staffing at this point, we're going to remain the same. And we're anticipating that breakfast will give us a nice uptick. And we are, as we have said in the past, we need to add some, some people to continue to pull me out, so that I can do things like the snack group. And if it works well here, maybe we can get to another building. And so we're looking to add a couple of two, three hour positions. One will be more lunch, and the other one, we're hoping will be like a 7 to 10 AM. So that will be kind of like our cave person. So, to kind of dedicate someone there in the morning, so we wanted to see if we can get somebody with a bright, sunshiny attitude and ready to go. So, any questions on the high school lunch situation?
I'd just like to mention that I'm glad to hear you're hiring, because I think the last time we talked about this, you thought you were going to lose staff or cut hours. So I'm glad that you're going the opposite way.
Scott and I did talk about that, and we decided, you know what, let's go another year, before we make any drastic changes to staff, because we're really, I really am hopeful about the Grizzly Cave doing some, some nice business for us.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful. Go ahead, Shane.
Thank you. The only question I have, Megan, is, it sounds like, the way this is laying out, everything's working for you and your staff, and the one lunch thing has really kind of rectified itself, and we're in a good place going into next year?
Overall, yes. It's taken a while to kind of figure it out. Is it our favorite? No. I'm not going to.
But you guys are making it work.
But we've made it work, we have a good crew. It has affected some of the items that we conserve. For example, you know, we still, we can't do a Chipotle day. That's just not going to happen, because we don't have space or time, and we can't handle all of those choices happening at once. So the give and take is that. And, you know, so we'll do the best that we can, you know, but the staff, we have big pieces of paper hanging in my office and on the windows with ideas for the cave, and there are questions, so that then we can meet and continue to talk about it.
And it does sound like there's some excitement among the staff.
Yes, yes. Staff, and, you know, the idea that they will have a permanent place, they're not going to always have to be wheeling stuff down. We can leave stuff in the room, it's going to be locked, it's going to be secure. Yes, so it will be some wheeling, but not like what it's been. And also, we can really make it our own, because as one of our staff members very stupidly pointed out, well, we look kind of like half in, half out, because we're kind of here, and we've got a little cart, you know, now we can go all in, as they say in poker.
Awesome.
Thanks, Shane. Ellen, you had your hand up?
I'd like to move the board
Well, we're not done yet. She's not done yet, right?
I have a couple more paragraphs.
Oh, okay.
Hang on. I appreciate your support, though. Yeah. There is some state and federal legislation that you do need to be aware of, that if any of this comes through, we win. If any, if things don't come through, we will lose some serious amounts of dollars. The first is New Hampshire House Bill 572, and this is raising the free eligibility to 300% of poverty, which would be state funded. It would come from the Educational Trust Fund, as I understand. It's currently at the Senate Education Committee. They've had one hearing. The Senate is more concerned about how much it would cost. Department of Education has not been able to give them good numbers. But what does this mean to a family of four? Scott and I kind of figured it out. If you're making 80,000 or less, you would be eligible for free meals. This would solve the problem that Scott and I have talked about. We miss a whole lot of people who really could benefit from a free meal. Because if they got the free meal, then they could pay for their child to have soccer or piano lesson, or an art lesson. Because then they don't have to worry about buying, you know, that extra grocery or paying for that school meal. You know, that, that working class who just need a little bit of help every once in a while. And that's one of the things we saw as the benefit of COVID, was when everything was free. Those families really, it really helped a lot of families. So this would be really exciting. New Hampshire is actually surrounded, Vermont, Massachusetts, and Maine. All, their state legislatures all put in free meals this year. Massachusetts, I believe, is continuing it. I believe all three of them are continuing that into the next year.
Maine and Vermont are both continuing.
Yeah. So we're surrounded. Maybe there's a little pressure there, but I have, this is, I, I have to say, I never thought I would see that in New Hampshire, ever. And the fact that it got by the House is thrilling. So even to get this far is pretty exciting, so. There are other, two other bills at the federal level, HR 1269, Healthy Meals Help Kids Learn Act, and HR 1424, Helping Schools Feed Kids Act. This year, we have received an extra 40 cents for every lunch we serve, and an extra 15 cents for every breakfast. That's, was only authorized for this school year. These two bills are basically the same. The only difference is that 1269 would make that 40 cents and 15 cents, they would turn them into 45 and 28, permanent. 1424, we just extended for another year. Okay? If either one of those do not pass, we will lose at least $75,000 in federal monies next year, if our participation stays the same, which will be a big hit. And that is only based on our meals through May, that does not include June. Okay? So that's going to be a big hit if that comes to pass. Now, I don't, it's only, it's been referred to the House Committee on Education and Workforce, both, both of those have been referred there back in March. So they've been busy with the debt ceiling lately, so whether or not kids will come back up to the forefront, I have no idea. But it's important that you understand what we could be looking at. It's a biggie. Okay? Questions on those before?
Go ahead, Ellen.
None of these have to do whether we have one lunch period or not. This is something different.
Correct. Correct. This is just like a state of the Yeah. Well, no, we're just going to do the whole thing. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Megan?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So this, bringing us down to our projected financial status, you'll see, we started the year with approximately $450,000 of a fund balance. This is, we're projecting a little over a million dollars in revenues, 1.1,115,000 dollars in expenses, and capital expenditures of $128,000. We had planned to spend that money, so we are looking at a net loss this year of $148,852, which would, does not include, we still have a Maple Avenue dishwasher that we would like to replace for the cost of approximately $30,000, and that should include installation. We now have to get approval from the state for anything that we purchase that's over $5,000.
It's crazy.
Why?
Don't, we, we've gone down this rabbit hole, Scott and I have.
I contacted the state, it's just part of their, it's part of the federal criteria, and both of us contacted the state, and there's no budging on that. So they started quoting CFR language, and I checked into it, and it does say that. So it's just very outdated and antiquated federal legislations.
It's controlling.
And it's interesting, I mean, I've been doing this job for close to 30 years, I mean, and I'd never heard of this.
I've never, I'd never heard of it before you mentioned it.
And it's been on the books apparently for a while, and now they're just kicking this in, so.
So they haven't been enforcing that. Now the New Hampshire Education Department is taking it upon themselves to approve all of these types of purchases.
Yes. Yeah, so.
At the local level.
Correct. Yes, so I have bids that came in today, and then I will fill out a form, send that to them, and hopefully that will be, it should be approved. But it, there's still, it adds time to our process. So with that, we would end up with a new fund balance of $270,000 and change. So we still have money in the bank to try and get through next year, because like I said, we're already going, we have the potential of losing some serious reimbursement, some serious revenue next year. And that brings me down to the bottom with, Scott and I talked, we felt we should give you some sort of pricing proposal for you to accept or decline, totally up to you. Because not only do we have the potential of the lost reimbursement, but we also have a new union contract that was very graciously voted in by the voters. That will probably be at least $30,000 to our labor line. And I don't have grocery bid in yet, that won't be until the end of this month, but we do anticipate costs going up there. So that's why we felt that we should put in some sort of price increase for you to consider. And again, that's, it will be your choice as to how you wish to, to proceed. But we're looking at roughly a 15 cent increase on lunch, and I'd like to get a quarter on breakfast, because breakfast items are getting pricier. I'm not sure why, but they are. Also, with the Grizzly Cave coming in, it gives us some flexibility at the high school level to make sure that we can try and incorporate some of these items that we'd like to incorporate. And it, there is also a 25 cent increase in adult pricing as well, so.
So I know, hang on, let's see, last year in our retreat, we did talk quite a bit about the prices, and for the board members that were there, we agreed to only go up a little, so that we weren't hurting our families so much. So this is kind of taking that second step to get where you need to be, so we didn't hit everyone so hard last year.
Right.
So I just want to remind everybody of that. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Directed specifically to Scott, with the proposed increases, everything else being equal, knowing that we have the contract that was approved, knowing that we're going to have 6 to 12% increase in food prices, would this keep us at a steady state for expenditures versus revenue?
It's always a tough one, because
Best guess.
As, we believe, yes, we're recommending this increase, simply because there are so many unknowns. So we, we don't know about the federal legislation. We don't, so with that, we're trying to make a calculated, you know, estimate as to, you know, where we would be. Also recognizing that the amount is what it is. It would be way higher if we didn't have a very healthy fund balance, too. So I think we're, we can hedge on that, you know, we, so we can hedge on that $270,000 fund balance, know that, that if we get crushed and we lose $150,000, we've, we've got money to absorb that. And also recognizing what Megan and I talk about every week, is that, we've got families who have to pay for these meals, and they might have two, three, four kids, so we're, we're trying to be, hit that sweet spot.
Knowing that we also have CIP, we have something on CIP for, for this as well, again, our fund balance should be okay?
What do you mean, CIP?
Don't we have a, don't we have some items on CIP?
For food service.
For food service?
Not really. We just have like, the dishwasher, which is
Just the dishwasher. No refrigeration units, no additional items that we might need to be looking at?
Not at this point.
We've been, we've been doing that over, and again, sometimes we plan it, sometimes we haven't, but we've been replacing a lot of these units over the last two years, they've all been going.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And the one piece I just realized I, I have not touched on, but there are proposed nutrition changes coming. Right now, they're only a proposal, but, Dan, this is all for you, Dan.
No chocolate milk for you, Dan.
Literally, one of the proposals is no flavored milk at the elementary or middle school, and only at the high school. USDA is trying to
That makes no sense, I got to tell you. No sense.
My fourth grader says that will ruin lunch.
Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah. So they're trying to, you know, adjust sugar levels in people's diet, and I will tell you, the proposals that are coming down, I understand the science behind it, but I don't support them.
This is psychological
I think they're going too far, and we're putting, if they go through, we're putting our, our lunch program on a nutrition pedestal that no one actually in, out in the world actually eats to. So it's going to be food that the students, you know, and not to mention what the manufacturers are just going to, they're going to start pulling out even more. So, just, but that's, hopefully, in a year from now, I'll be able to say, chocolate milk forever. Yikes.
So the only thing you need from us tonight is approval of the increase. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any?
What about the dishwasher, Scott?
No, we've already, that was part of our plan from last year. That's not anything new. We had, I think, last year, we had a whole list of mountain staking, didn't we?
Was that, I don't know if that
We wanted, if you want to, just to play it safe, I could have sworn it was part of that plan.
I'm not 100% sure, so we probably should play it safe. Thank you.
So the dishwasher, the, a separate motion for the increase, and the one lunch was already, we already talked about.
But I thought we put a limitation on it.
Limitation?
I thought we put a limitation on it, something pending the results of the, of what was coming. I thought there was an analog
No, we, we did that last time.
Yeah.
It was the last time. It was pending.
It was pending.
Versus last time, and then we approved it.
Right.
We did approve this to on go.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, this, this was a request for us to hear how well that process is going.
That was going, right. Okay. So does anybody have any questions, discussions for Megan, let's just hear? If not, we need two motions, one for the increase and one for the dishwasher.
I'll move to, to go with the increase in the food, breakfast and lunch costs as presented.
Thank you, Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Nicole. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. And now the dishwasher.
Move to, what, what do I want to say?
Approve the purchase.
Approve the purchase of the dishwasher for approximately 30,000, pending state approval.
Great, thank you, Ellen, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, I heard Caroline first. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Great.
Thank you, Megan.
Go home. All right, so we're, now we're going to go back up to A and F. So Dan, invoice?
Yeah, we, we met this evening, and of some of the other items, we have a manifest we would like you to approve, so I'll make a motion that we do approve the total manifest value of $2,584,757.59.
Thank you, Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Right, Caroline? Okay, go ahead.
We've got payroll taxes, benefits, $1,935. That's the bulk of it, every time we do this. Sped activities, we got several sped and general expenses, this, so you can take a look at your sheets. Durham School Services, $72,600. Birch Tree Center, $11,656. Most of these are in district, out of district, you know, transportation, monitoring, services. The rest of these are pretty much either services or contracted services. Johnson ABA Consulting, $16,800. Stratford Learning, $8288. Literacy Learning, $7939. Birch Behavioral Therapy, $5438. Lighthouse School, $21,543. Lighthouse School, $21,543. Crest Collaborative, $5764. That's about $150,000. Of those invoices for each company at $5,000 or more. So there were, there were more expenditures than that. That's the ones that are $5,000 or more. General expenses that meet the criteria for our individual list, SAU 19, $111,495. The Goffstown Truck Center, $64,347. That includes both Manchester School of Technology, the late bus, the kindergarten, and the athletics transportation. Because if you remember, Goffstown Truck Center is in hundreds of thousands for the regular ed. It's not on this particular one. GovConnection is for IT equipment, $30,456. Eversource for our power, $27,554, and that's district wide. Amazon, some books, some equipment, some supplies, $27,360. And if anybody is interested, Scott actually brought the details of those, so if you want to take a peek at them, they're available. MPS, and it's not an acronym, that's actually the company name, MPS. That's textbooks for economics and psychology here at the high school, $19,022. Uncle Barry's Carpentry, you've seen that before. These are donated funds for another payment for the GRS, the press box that's on the field, $16,250. School Specialty is replacement student furniture over at Mountain View, $12,399. Dead River for our propane, $9808. Stan Tech Consulting, they're the people who help us with the heating controls, design, and they're helping us prepare the RFP for when we have to send it out, $7393. SGS Turf Care, that's Mountain View and the high school field maintenance, $5969. Falette, MVMS Media Center, some books, $5828. And David Ayotte and Associates, these are a deposit for the cheer mats we talked about, $5171. And then Performance Food Service, $23,999.
All right, anybody have any questions or comments on this? Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? See and none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, Dan.
Cool. We have several other items that we had talked about. The field renovation, capital reserve, the bus turnaround. Why don't I turn it over to Scott and he can do them one by one for us?
Sure. The first one will require, some of them will require action by the board, but that one is the completed Goffstown School District capital projects for this past year. You should have in your packet, there is a Glen Lake boiler replacement. This is one where the district has laid out the funds for that. Because you're using capital reserve fund monies, we have to officially request those funds from the trustee of trust funds. So again, that amount that we would be requesting from the trustees is $36,066. And I would request a motion be made to withdraw those funds.
So moved.
Go ahead. So a second, a motion by Jared, a second by Alan, the motion's on the bottom. Any further discussion? See and none?
Could we, could we actually read the motion so that the public hears it?
I thought he did.
Go ahead, Jared. Yeah, he kinda.
Was that a reading of the motion or you were just?
I did not, I just kind of winged it, but it said, it kind of sounded like it, so.
Go ahead, Jared.
So for Dan and the public's knowledge.
Thank you.
Motion to withdraw $36,066 from the capital reserve, from the facilities capital reserve fund held by the town of Goffstown, trustee of the trust funds, and deposited into the capital projects fund of which all of the $36,066 will fund the Glen Lake boiler replacement.
Thank you, Jared. And Alan, you still second. Any further discussion? See and none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you.
I did want to give everyone an update on a couple of our projects. So the Mountain View bus turnaround, they will start to mobilize on the last day of school. And for that project, we have already been in touch with Eversource. We have a couple of utility poles that have to get moved, but that project starts the day after school starts, school finishes, so we can meet that completion before it opens up again. Mountain View has been aware of that because we do have summer school. And again, most of that activity is going to fall, you know, again, on the backside of the school. Same thing for the Goffstown High School Theater renovation project. That project also will start right after school concludes here at the high school. Well, they'll be removing seats. I think Lil is trying to sell the seats for $5 or something for a fundraiser or? No, I was joking.
She's like, what? Did you see my face?
Walden Pond again.
Don't do that to her.
No, just making sure you were paying attention.
I'm reading.
So, so with that, that project will start and Dawn and Randy are working, you know, on, on that one. Again, we've got a short timeframe, two months pretty much, to get, to get that one going. The field renovation project, some of you, two, two of the board members came up prior to this meeting and got a tour. The turf itself is completed. The fencing, I think, will go in this week. The press box will be mostly sided by this week. Roof goes on next week. The light towers have all been installed and now we're waiting on Eversource to pull the power from here, install some poles, so that could be the big challenge. So we could have a really great field with no power, but we're keeping our fingers crossed. So with that, I gave you just a, kind of an overview, which I covered in A and F. So the long story short here is that we're making really good progress. Due to a lower electrical bid that we were able to ascertain, we are going to proceed with both insulating and putting drywall in that building. So that will help us. The other things that are for possible consideration would be to put down more of like a laminate type flooring and to put in the potential of a mini split type system. So we did get very favorable quotes on that, but no action needed at this point. I will tell you that I will try to get a couple more donations as best I can. We did get a really great price from an insulation contractor. And just for a little bit of trivia, the owner of, or one of the executives of that company was the person who scored the first touchdown for Goffstown High School Football Club 20 something years ago. So.
Wow.
Small world, right?
Yeah.
So more, more to follow on that one at your, at your, at your next meeting. But as you can see, we're, you know, most of the unknowns, you know, kind of have occurred. We did hit some ledge, which we accounted for. Our sound system estimate was lower, was, was more than what the, we thought we had budgeted was not enough, so we had to accommodate for that. But again, we are putting in, they're putting on speakers tomorrow. They'll be putting speakers on the light towers as well. So we're moving ahead and it's going well on that one. Next topic was.
Hang on one second.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just a question. There was conversation about music since we brought up speakers. I know that there was the conversation of playing six or so or more songs. Do we need to pay royalties or licensing fees for those songs?
I don't know how you know that, but yes. I, I don't know about, we do have licenses for movies and songs and all of that, but you are correct. We were asked to provide, I think, six to eight songs that they somehow will use for the system where the lights flicker to the beat of the song. So if you want me to use Metallica, I'll do whatever you want. So just give me a favorite song.
He's a corn guy. He's a corn guy.
Corn, wow, okay. There is a corn song that would be appropriate, we can raise that.
Oklahoma.
Well, I guess, is that something that needs to be approved by the board if we're looking to pay royalties for a specific song?
No, we already do.
Correct. But do we need to actually approve the songs that are going to be displayed on our speaker systems to the public? Like we'd have to approve for a kind of theater or anything else?
That's a, that's a good question. I'll, I'll check into it. I just, I just don't know.
Thank you, Jared.
If we already pay the royalties, have we already given permission? If these are songs that were in a production? That's a good question. Yeah, but I, I'm.
We should find out.
I think the royalties only happen for one event though.
Sometimes they do, yeah. And that's another good point. Do we have to do it every time they play? Like the radio, here's a, here's a quarter, 25 cents or something every time they play or?
No, get me wrong, I would love to pay a lot of royalties for a lot of touchdowns or goals scored in soccer and everything else, but.
Only for our team, not the other team.
Of course, but on a, on a serious note though, I, I think that if we're going to designate certain songs to be played on our speakers, I think we should be approving that as a board.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
So can you get that information for our next meeting?
Yeah.
Scott, please?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jared. All right, is there any more questions on the field? All right, go ahead.
All right. Next one was IT core switches. And I'm going to get a little help from Dan on this one with respect to, because he has had extensive conversations with Steve and Steve's not here. But essentially, I, this kind of goes hand in hand with a budget transfer request. And if you go into, you should have it in your packets, I believe. I did a budget transfer request. And essentially, I'll just read it for the public. This budget transfer is related to replacing the IT core switches at all of our schools. The core switches at our schools are end of life and have been included in the district's CIP plan. These core switches connect devices in the school's computer network together. Due to the age of the current switches, we experience network connectivity issues. The funding for these core switches to come from the existing IT budget. When the school district was awarded grants for teacher and staff laptops, our IT director was able to defer the cost of a new student laptop lease by one year, thus the request to transfer budget allocations for laptop leases for this purpose. These core switches are eligible for E-rate, which represents a 40% offset to the total cost of approximately $200,000 district wide for all schools. So the budget transfer is approximately, it's $128,233 and it's coming from the laptop leases at the above schools.
Any?
And again, Dan, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add?
Only if there's questions.
Is there any questions, comments on these, these switches?
It's pretty self-explanatory. This is the.
And it's overdue.
Infrastructure.
This is overdue.
Yeah, if the infrastructure is not updated, then any, well, what we saw with the MAP program today, that's, forget it. It's not going to work because there will be no internet connectivity necessarily. You've got to change the switches. The switches are, I think, six or seven years old, they may be older. And the life expectancy is normally around five years. In government, we stretch it as much as possible, usually until they like start failing, and that has happened. Beginning to happen.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yes, for the budget transfer.
So you could just make a motion to accept the budget transfer?
Right.
And that budget transfer is GBT 91 as presented?
Okay. Do I have to say it or did you?
All right. Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? By Ginny? Any further discussion? Yes, Jared?
Just, just looking to the future, this is something that should have been on CIP?
It is.
It was on CIP.
It was on CIP that we're executing?
Yep.
Okay, I'm good.
Thank you, Jared.
We're, we're asking to fund it earlier because we just can't push it further anymore. It would not be wise to.
Ed, well, to go on, if it's in CIP?
Yep.
Should we be using CRF funds versus budget transfers?
You don't need to.
Well.
Well, that's what CRF is for.
But you don't need to.
It, right, it would, it's eligible for the CRF. That would be a prop, a better proper methodology to discuss it. Now, whether we use the CRF that it's eligible for or the budget because we have budget funds available is exactly what we're here to talk about.
If I may, I know there's a motion, but we're in discussion on the motion.
Yep.
I just, I get concerned with this because I know that, most of you know I'm fighting an ever extensive battle with the Budget Committee. And every year, they discuss CRF and the need for CRF and why do we put money in CRF? And if we are saying that we have a CRF, but we're not using CRF and we're using budget transfers from our, that will go into our unreserved fund balance, that is going to be a difficult continuing conversation for me to overcome. And so I just want to recognize the situation that we're in. This board knows that I am very diligent in supporting our position that as we move forward. I just get concerned that we might have difficulties overcoming some of those Budget Committee members that continuously criticize our CRF if we're not using it for its stated purpose, either because it's not funded or for other reasons. So I just want to make, mention it.
And if I may, the, if we look at the budget transfer, it's coming from equipment that would otherwise have been spent on equipment, but we're not buying that equipment, we're buying this equipment. So it's not like we're taking costs for personnel and swapping it over for equipment. It's equipment for equipment. That, that would be an, an argument that could be used.
Redda, you had your hand up.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate what you're saying and I'm always listening to what you're saying. It's like, okay, I'm trying to understand this. I also, and I don't have it in front of me, but I think we have a lot of big ticket items that we're going to be paying for in the near future. And one of the problems is that we can never, you know, we didn't get as much in the CRF as we had wanted and we're trying to get ahead of the game. So this is an opportunity where it's an option, but it seems like it, it makes sense to, to just transfer the funds versus taking out of the CRF because we're never going to get ahead with the CRF to pay for some of those upcoming. Again, I think it's a matter of looking at the CIP and how much money we have and what's the best use of the CIP.
Thank you, Redda. Anyone else? Scott?
And just, in prior CIPs, when we, the funding source, we did put tax appropriation E-rate. We didn't put use of CRF, wherever that's worth. I mean, there were certain things that we did, like when we did the replace current tractor, we put the funding source of CIP as CRF. So that would, that would be my explanation. And we're not perfect, you know, I mean, I think, but, you know, in looking at last year's, you know, CIP, when we talked about upgrading core switches, we did say that it would be tax rate, a tax appropriation, which is your budget, and using E-rate. So we're holding true to that, if that helps with the Budget Committee.
Are you good?
We'll get good.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Did I, I didn't see a hand up over here, right? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
So did have two informational ones for the board. The Hooksett School Board did approve the memorandum of understanding and we did get, I know this sounds so ironic, but we did get a Hooksett tuition student the week after. So that's good. I'm also continuing to work on the memorandum of understanding between the YMCA and the school district. There's been so much going on, I haven't been able to finalize that, but I did mention that, you know, to you, I think, in prior meetings where in lieu of charging each other, it's going to be just an understanding that we're not going to charge each other and return what those services are. And again, just for the public's benefit, the Y does provide after-school care at Bartlett and Maple Avenue. And in return, what Goffstown School District will be getting is use of the pool for our swim team, use of the gymnastics area for our gymnastics team. We are going to be having our flex program and life skills students go to the Y once a month for programming there. And they're, they will be continuing to offer students who have financial need, free Y memberships. Again, there's a limited number of those, but that's also part of it and we're working on, there's a donor who's offering swim lesson, swim, I'm sorry, aquatic safety program is what it is. So we're, there's a lot of things that the Y is having conversations with us about. So I'm hoping that I'll have this thing maybe by your retreat. If not, we'll talk about what's in it by then. That's it.
All right, thank you, Scott. Are you done?
That's it, yeah.
All right, Budget Committee, Jared?
Next meeting is June 20th at 6:00 PM right in here.
Okay. Thank you. P and C?
Yes. So we did, we haven't met.
So we did, we haven't met, our last meeting was, the last meeting was the year before the break. We'll, just a few reminders, the retreat is from three-day on June 19th. It's also very nicely put on the back of the agenda. So that is at St. Ace's. Also, prior to the retreat, you will see the questions in your packet. There's a very short board reflection, and that will be sent out via survey, so you can just fill it out if you want to look at the questions ahead of time. And we'll get this back to you prior to the retreat, and it'll allow us to reflect on where we are and where we're going, what we'd like to change. Just around this time of year, we usually talk about the retirement bells when there's teachers retiring. We try to attend the meetings and present those at this time. We don't have that information, but Brian said he'll be able to get that, and we'll be, if anyone's interested in presenting them at the, at the retirement, it's really a lot of fun.
Yeah.
It's great to see. So if you, you have the ability to be there, we'll, we'll share that out with you. And then, our next meeting is possibly in the August meeting, because I think we meet August, and then we have, and then we have Labor Day, and then we start getting into budget season. So I think we'll probably try to schedule that prior to our August meeting, depending on what comes out of the retreat.
Right. Sounds good. Thank you, Rheta. All right, policy review, we did meet. And usually, we don't meet in June, but we had a couple of policies that we sent back for clarification. So we have a meeting on June 12th at 5:30 at the SAU. And further down, we have second reads and Q and As, first reads. CNE, Ginny?
Our last meeting was the math presentation, and thank you for accepting that today. And we have no other meetings until fall.
Great, thank you. Your turn, Brian Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mrs. Kohler, I'm going to ask you, I'll ask you at the end of my remarks to comment on the public comment that we received earlier. I wondered if you might share a little information with the board. I wanted the board to have as much information about the French inquiry as we can give, so I'll come back to you on that.
Sure.
So last week, we had a presentation from Fred Vermontay, who came and spoke to us about the ED 306 rule changes that are in the process of being evaluated. I'd like to thank the board members who were able to attend that. We also had board members from New Boston. I think it's a really good opportunity for the board to kind of get a sense of the direction that the, these rules are going in. And that continues to be more competency-based, and as we heard from the presentation, continuing to push things like extended learning opportunities for students. So if anyone is interested in that presentation, it was recorded, so GTV was here, and that was broadcast live, and that's also available on CalTura. So I wanted to ask, we are doing a high school graduation barbecue again, so we haven't done this in the last several years. We don't have to do the cooking anymore, but if any of you are interested in serving, I can't guarantee that there won't be a hairnet involved in that, or perhaps Mr. Rosimus, a beard net.
I was going to say, I'm a little.
Yeah, you're okay on the top. What's it going to cover? So if anyone is interested or available on High School Graduation Day, we don't have the time.
When is this?
Fifteenth.
June 15th.
Fifteen?
Yep.
Fifteenth, and it's probably somewhere around 11 o'clock-ish?
Right, is it at St. Ace's?
It's at St. Ace's. So if anybody's interested, if you could let Mrs. Moore know, we have plenty of help, but it's a nice, if you'd like to be a part of it, it's, it's really a fun event, and it's.
Quite to talk to the students.
It's a blast. It's a blast.
And by the way, one cheeseburger.
Well, you know, some of those kids are hungry.
Some of the students, when I was there, that got there early.
They can come back.
Ate well.
Well, there's a lot to feed them. So if anybody's available for that, let me know. So every year, the state has been doing what they call an 603 survey, which has been a survey that goes out to staff and to families. We have just gotten the results of that and are in the early stages of taking a look at our evaluation data, and this will be a topic for our administrative retreat, but that was just released from the department, I think, the end of last week. Mr. Gross gave a very comprehensive update on the field and everything that's happening out there. I wanted to let the board know that last week, I went and testified before the House Education Committee. There are three different bills that are amendments. The board will recall that I had briefed you on the requirement of graduating seniors, their families to fill out the FAFSA, which is the federal financial, financial information. I went and testified along with the superintendent from the Bedford School District, sharing our thoughts that we don't think that that is an appropriate bill. We support a full repeal. Senator Khan, who is no longer a state senator from Keene, but he was the one who had, I guess, sponsored this originally and came and spoke. There is a compelling reason. He does make a compelling case of why it's a good thing for families to choose this. And be that as it may, I don't want to be in a situation that I'm withholding a student's diploma because their family was not comfortable releasing financial information to the government. And by the way, when you fill the information out, you have to identify at least one college or institution of higher education that would receive your information. So it, there is a lot going on here, so I thought the board would appreciate knowing that Superintendent Forney and I went and spoke, and we submitted a letter, and there were 22 superintendents that signed it. So we went and spoke on behalf of the 22 superintendents who signed the letter. So I don't know what the House Education Committee will do. They had three different amendments that they were voting on. We'll see what happens. And lastly, it's a busy end of the year. We're going to finish strong. We've been very busy hiring. You'll see when we get to staffing updates, that I think we've had some very strong hires that Mrs. Kohler has been seeing, so we're very excited about that. And I would stop there and ask if there are any questions.
Mr. Bulkey, would you like me to talk about public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
So just as the board will recall, we have had trouble hiring for French for a number of years. Prior to COVID, we had a part-time teacher that was in there, a late resignation, and we got this unicorn that was a retired teacher from Vermont who moved to New Hampshire that we actually hired the day before school started. Fast forward through COVID, we're coming out of COVID, and that teacher that was amazing ended up resigning. We were able to convince her to stay in a remote capacity where she was teaching, sometimes live, sometimes recorded lessons from home, and we had a facilitator in the classroom with our seventh and eighth graders. Clearly, that was not the best methodology. The facilitator in the room was not a certified teacher, didn't have a lot of experience in French, but we did the best we could. From there, we did advertise the position and did not get any applicants. There was a teacher from Goffstown High School that was retiring, and we were able to convince her to be able to teach our eighth graders this year that had completed the first half of seventh grade, the first half of French one of seventh graders, to be able to continue it in eighth grade. So right now, we do not have any seventh graders that have, that are currently taking French. We did bring this information through the handbooks to CNE. This was part of our discussion, and I do know that Mr. Bulkey has been talking for quite some time about our problems in hiring for French. Please know that we have reached out to local colleges to try to gain interest for the position when we had positions open. We also contacted, there is an organization, and I apologize for not knowing the name of it off the top of my head, but it's a French organization located on the west side of Manchester to see if we could kind of drum up some business to be able to have a French teacher. But the shortage is real. We've reached out to other districts. They're having the same problem with being able to get a lot of world language teachers to apply for positions. And with this being a part-time position, it made it really hard to get applicants. So one of the things that I think is important is the transparency in that communication. I think that that's really important for us to hear, and I will certainly bring that feedback back to Mountain View about communicating all of these changes. I think it's really important for, for parents to know, so.
And Wendy, the only thing I would add is, we worked really hard to make sure that we could continue French for those eighth graders that already had done the first half. And we're pretty lucky that we're able to do that.
Yes.
Absolutely. Alan, you had your hand up.
Yeah. Is there anything available for, I don't know what the term, long distance, is it long distance?
V-LAX?
V-LAX.
Whether it's V-LAX or any other thing that could be brought in technology-wise and taught long distance.
So V-LAX does offer a French one program. And I'll be honest with you, they offer some other world language programs as well. In the past, when I was at Mountain View, there were some families that chose to do those programs outside of school, and clearly, they would be able to continue to do that. So that definitely is an option.
Can we do it in school, though?
I think the question then becomes the person that's in the room to be able to facilitate that, and then we are not the graders of that material. It goes through the Virtual Learning Academy. We also have to find out, I'm not sure what the cost associated would be with running a single session just for our students. We also are different in the fact that we offer the first part of French one in seventh grade and the second part in eighth grade. That program is developed for a one-year program. So how would that translate to our current model would be something that we'd really have to look at.
And we can't offer what we can't staff.
Right. Okay.
And it's the sustainability of being able to staff it, not just, you know, it's year after year. This has been a multi-year challenge that we have not been able to keep staffing in that position.
Nicole, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I was just curious if there might be an opportunity to maybe, are there any other languages that are easier to hire for that we might be able to swap it out for more language opportunities, or no?
I think, I think that's a great question. I think we also have to look at programming for Goffstown High School, because what we don't want to do is offer something that perhaps we don't offer at the high school level. We need to make sure that we're offering something that they could build upon, so. But yeah, absolutely, I think. We always want to look at our offerings and make sure that we're getting students engaged. And, you know, it is hard. We're just offering Spanish. We are.
Ginny, go ahead.
Is this a decision ongoing that we're not going to offer French at the middle school level, or are we going to continue and try and find like maybe a full-time person after next, after next year?
Well, our decision was that we were not going to be offering French moving forward, that we felt it was not sustainable to be able to find the staff, to keep the staff, and that was what we had recommended, was essentially the discontinuation of that program.
In the middle school?
At the middle school.
Ginny, may I also, so for, for the position to move to full-time, we did not have enough interest for that position, for that position to become full-time. We didn't have enough students that were interested in taking it. So that was the reason why it was a part-time position, is we didn't have a full-time teacher load to be able to offer it as a full-time position for French.
Between seventh and eighth grade?
We don't. The numbers are very low for interest. They hadn't historically been, let me say that, historically been.
The second part of my question is, will that impact us on, excuse me, accreditation at all?
No. So for accreditation, the accrediting agency would be the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. There is no requirement for, you know, having a multi-language world language program that I'm aware of.
No. It's just offering different unified arts and different other non-core content classes that's a part of that, but it's not specific to world languages.
Lilly, you had your hand up.
Just a quick question. Would that affect the high schools' AP or French five? Because then we wouldn't have seniors even being able to get to the level that certain Spanish students get to in their, like, language studies?
Yes.
That would likely be the case.
Absolutely. It will impact that.
Rheta?
If they take V-LAX, are those, I mean, would they be able to complete French in middle school and move into a higher level in high school?
Yes.
And those are at no cost, if they do it online?
Correct. Yes. We've had students in the past, as an example, that have moved to Mountain View during their eighth grade year and had not completed any world language in the school they came from. So in a lot of cases, those families have chosen to take Spanish, in most of the cases that I was involved in, via V-LAX so that they could move into Spanish II when they came here as a freshman. So that would still be an option.
Should we let families know that that's an option for them so that, that they can go ahead with French if that's what their child is looking for?
I would think we'd want to make an announcement of this, send it out to Mountain View's newsletters, and I would think.
Well, so, we have been hesitant to encourage people to go take French through V-LAX. So that is an option. The reality is, families could take anything through V-LAX. You can take your entire elementary or middle school education through V-LAX now. So I think we, we are hesitant to try to send people away to V-LAX in general. I, I do think we've shared with families that this was an option. When we've had inquiries from families, we have not, I, I'm not interested in publishing, you know, here's everything you can do on V-LAX. Let's remember that that takes enrollment away from us, and because it's a charter school, they get more money in adequacy than we get as a traditional public school. So we get about $3,700 per student, they get about $5,500, because they get more money because you attend a charter school. So adequacy is different for charter schools.
Lilly, I saw your hand up.
My question was actually answered. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead, Rheta.
Just, just as a follow-up, because I don't, I don't disagree especially with foreign languages, learning that in an online environment.
It's really hard.
This is not, this is not a one-on-one facilitation.
Very hard.
But it is an option for somebody that's highly motivated. I am concerned, though, are they, if they pass, are they really prepared to move into, like, French II?
French II.
In ninth grade?
Yeah.
Yeah. What about Latin? Because we offer Latin here at the high school.
So we got very, very lucky. So you'll recall, our Latin teacher is retiring, and she is a special woman, and she made it her kind of singular mission to find her replacement. And by God, she did. So we have a Latin teacher. Were it not for her efforts, I don't know that we would have a Latin teacher. We might be sitting here saying, unfortunately, I have no ability to hire a Latin teacher at Goffstown High School, but we did.
So right now, we still offer Spanish at the middle school?
Yes.
And then when they start ninth grade, they can take Latin, French, or Spanish?
Yes.
Or Italian.
Italian.
Or Italian.
Yes.
And Latin has never been offered at the middle school, so kids that took French or Spanish in the middle school could switch over to a different language and still climb.
And some kids double up on the languages.
They do.
So a lot of kids we see might take one or two years of Latin, even though they might be taking Spanish or French.
Oh, sorry, Shane.
That's okay. We talked about unicorns, but this is a situation that I had at a school I used to work at, where we had a teacher who taught three sections of Spanish and two sections of French.
I'd like to hire that person.
Right? So, again, it may not be the easiest person to find, but that's something to keep an open mind about if.
We actually, we actually have one teacher here at Goffstown High School who, who is both.
Yeah. So if we can find that person, that may be something down the road that we can look at.
That would open up.
It's tough to find those people. Very tough.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you for answering that question from the speaker today. Any other superintendent stuff?
That was it. Thank you for the rest of that, Wendy. Thank you.
All right, moving on to all business, we have second reads, so we've done questions and answers, and Denise so wonderfully typed up any changes on your front piece of paper. So thank you, Denise. So what we need to do is go through each policy, make a motion to recommend, and vote on them. So the first policy we can do together is GBEF, GBEFR, and GBEF-F. Do I have a motion?
All motion to accept the changes in GBEF, GBEFR, and GBEFF.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second? By Ginny? Any further discussion?
I am just looking for the incidences. The plural, the plural instead of the singular. I am just looking for the incidences. The plural, the plural instead of the singular on page four. I don't see it. Do you see it? I'm looking in red, and that's probably why. Under enforcement information. Oh, there it is.
Did you find it?
No. I found the general area.
Talking about the bottom of the page.
It just says incident, Dan.
Incident related to the security of students.
So it should say incidences?
Incidents? No, I think it's incidences.
Incidents.
Oh. It says replace incident with incidences. I'm looking at this one.
Yeah.
All that one.
And I want to make sure, if it is accurate, it should be in there. But the paper I'm looking at doesn't have that.
Right, it's just incidents.
Incidences at the S too.
Incidents.
Just with an S, right?
Just an S on that.
Just an S on it.
Just an S, right?
Yeah, just an S.
Okay. Because I didn't understand I-N-C-I-V-E-N-C-E-S.
That's a different word.
So this is just putting S on word incident on that last one? Okay.
All right, so we have a motion.
And that's what the motion is?
Yes.
Okay.
So any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, we're unanimous. The next one is J-I-C-L, J-I-C-L-R, and J-I-C-L-F. Reg, reform, and policy.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second?
A second.
By Caroline. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. Next one is J-J-A.
Move to approve.
By Ellen. Do I have a second?
A second.
By Caroline. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. Next one, wait a second, my list here is off.
That, that could be a typo.
Yeah, because it's J-J.
J-J-G.
J-J.
No, I think it's a J-J-G.
Yeah, it's a J-J-G. Contest for students.
We changed it to competitions.
Yep. And it's also J-J-G-R is the reg.
Yeah.
So from contest to competitions for students. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve J-J-G and J-J-G-R.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second? By Jenny. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. Next one is J-L-C-A, J-L-C-A-F.
Motion to approve J-L-C-A and J-L-C-A-F.
Thank you, Shane.
F?
F is form. Because we're taking the forms and we're separating them from the policy.
Okay. Where did you do that?
We just started doing that so that we weren't changing.
Two meetings ago.
Every time the policy changed, the forms would have to get redone. So I have a motion from Shane. Do I have a second? By Jenny. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. All right, the next one is J-L-C-G and J-L-C-G-R.
I'll make a motion to approve policy J-L-C-G and regulation J-L-C-G-R.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second? Second by Caroline. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. And the last one is K-F-R.
Just the regulations.
Yeah, it's just the big regulation. We changed prices. That's basically what it was.
I'll make a motion to approve regulation K-F-R.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second? By Jenny. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. Thank you. All right. The next one is if anybody has questions. We did first reads at the last meeting. So hopefully everybody had a chance to read through them. Is there anything that you need clarification on understanding or anything like that? Aye. Have a good night.
Yeah, I just have one question on J-R-A. It says at the end that.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
J-R-A? Which one?
Student records and access.
The regular one or the reg or the form?
No, just the regular.
And what page?
I'm looking at page seven pertaining to page one. It says the recommendation is to use the NH-SBA model, but remove number four as no student photographs are allowed. So I just want some clarification on the student photographs. We're not keeping any photographs in the record. Is that why we're removing it from the policy overall?
Under C.
I am lost. I do not see the strikeout.
The comment is on page seven that we're not going to use number four.
One of seven.
Of the comment, okay.
And then it pertains to page one, section C four.
Of J-R-A, of the.
J-R-A, page one is eliminated.
So Stephen went through this, as no student photographs are allowed.
What we're saying is direct, the, the term directory information does not include a student photo.
Right.
Okay. So we're saying that we would not be sharing that as part of the directory information.
Right.
Yes.
Good question. Anything else from anyone on any of these policies? They'll come back at our next meeting for second reads. Is everybody good? All right, thank you. All right, new business.
Mr. Gross, I think you were going to take the Unified Basketball stipend request?
I was.
I thought so. I thought that was the plan.
It was?
I thought so. That was my plan.
By the way, the, the pulled pork was delicious. So Unified Basketball, if you'll recall, I think it was about three months ago, we talked about this being a co-curricular stipended position. And part of that process, we have now a more formalized process when we are looking to come before the school board whereby, in this case, the athletic director has completed an internal HR form which delineates what that coach would be doing, the hours spent on that particular activity, how many students they may coach or supervise in terms of that activity. So all of that has been done. So Justin Hough filled out that, that application. It has been routed through all of the administrators. And, you know, this one is a little bit unique in the sense that in, in, in most of these, we ask for a three-year period of time where an event, I'm sorry, a position would be funded by an organization. So, again, different than what you just did with Mountain View Middle School. This one is completely unique because it's a, it's a Unified Basketball program. So what we're asking for essentially is your, is essentially your acceptance of this co-curricular position and that we would then include it in our FY twenty-four, twenty-five budgeting process, and then to include it as a stipended position. Again, this one is different simply because there is no booster club, there's no entity that's coming forward that wishes to create this. It's simply a program that we had in the past. We haven't had it in a long time. We've kind of brought it back. And we do want to try to offer a stipend for, you know, for this, you know, really, really good program. I should let you know that when we did the co-curricular project and we were able to get all the co-curriculums that we did approved, there was monies, about almost $5,000 that was essentially held in reserve for this very purpose. So at this point, we'd be asking for the board's approval to accept the Unified Basketball as a co-curricular for the FY twenty-three, twenty-four school year for it to be stipended at the recommended amount.
Which would be basically the same amount that the board approved last, last winter, right?
The amount, I don't have the, I don't know if I have the packet, but we did, we did, I believe it was, I don't remember the amount. I can look it up, but it was under two thousand.
But it would be the same amount?
Yeah, yeah.
So the board had already approved that amount for this?
We did not pay a stipend for that particular position. We held it for this, for tonight to go through. So our intent is to pay it going forward.
Okay, going forward.
Yeah. But it's, it'll be commensurate with, with whatever. We use a formula essentially.
Yeah, a formula.
And Jenny, you're familiar with it. So we go through all of that. The union signs off on it as well. And it's whatever it comes out to. I can double check. I believe it was, it was definitely under $2,000.
Dan has his hand up.
Right. Before I'm comfortable voting on a motion to pick a stipend, I want to, one, know what the stipend is. And if I remember correctly, this is a very short season and it's not a whole lot of money.
Right.
So are you able, if you're unable to get us the number tonight, are you able to get it on the nineteenth?
Definitely on the nineteenth, but if you hold tight, I will try to look it up.
There are other questions, so.
I was just going to make the comment that it's, it's really an important co-curricular to have. I think it benefits all of our students. And it's just one position. Am I right, Scott?
Yes.
Just one, yeah. So I, I would certainly be in favor of it.
So why don't we keep moving on? And then Scott, when you have that number?
Yeah, I'm going to look it up.
And at this point, Scott, all of our positions are.
Oh, Jared, you did it.
Are stipend, right? Everyone who, everyone who is coaching is getting a.
Yes.
A stipend.
Right now. Are there others that are probably going to enter into the queue? Always.
Yes, okay.
Because we have heard.
But at this point, everyone is covered.
This was like the last one where.
Okay.
And they did it last year.
But I would share, there are still volunteer coaches.
Oh, absolutely.
In multiple sports. So we, we have a lot of, a lot of extra people who help coach, some of whom are not getting stipends. But we have worked so hard over the last, I mean, this, this has taken us ten years.
Ten years.
It's taken ten years to get all of these stipends through, what do we do? Three different union contracts and multiple budgets to be able to, over all these years, to get stipends for all of these positions.
Jared, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as we're going to be waiving a policy, I would like to know what policy we'd be waiving as part of that motion. As you're doing your research for your numbers as well.
The three-year policy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Jared.
Heather?
Yes.
Do anybody remember how we created this? Because I think this board created it and it wasn't.
No.
It wasn't a request like the most recent request that came.
You mean the Unified Basketball?
This Unified Basketball. I, I remember talking about it and we kind of created it differently than we did others. Am I remembering incorrectly?
I, I can hopefully refresh my memory. We applied, we, we received a grant that paid for.
It was for this year only, right?
For this year only. It paid for certain, you know, the uniforms and the equipment and the balls, all those things. But it did not include, you couldn't pay for.
The coach stipend.
Coach stipend. So we did have somebody volunteer to step up to be the coach of the unified team, but it wasn't quote unquote approved by the board. So thus, we could not pay a stipend.
Was the, did we do the three-year policy before or after we approved that?
Before.
So we will have to waive the policy.
The policy is J-J. Jared?
J-J.
J-J, yeah. And it was adopted on, let me just print it up. I think it was, it was just this past year, so.
And Scott, you said the stipend was less than 2,000?
Yeah, it's eleven, seven, twenty-two is when it was adopted.
Oh, I thought that was the close.
Yeah, last November.
That's what I was writing down. It's under 2,000, right?
It is.
I said it in my paper.
J-J.
Yeah. And it does require, the policy talks about when you bring on.
A new program.
A new program. That it's a, it's a pilot for.
Three years.
Within these guidelines, it's a provision that after three years of existence as a pilot organization, there may be subject of a review to become recognized by the school district with a paid advisor position. So that's what you would be essentially waiving.
I actually have that in my May eighth packet, Heather, for our subcommittee. I don't know.
How does this?
Yeah, because I. It said nothing.
Yeah.
The amount at all? I don't remember. Wasn't it something you think from paid or not?
Because I can't find it.
I'll have to get back to you at your next meeting. I don't know the amount.
Okay.
My follow-up on that would be, is there a specific reason we want to waive it for this role, but say not maybe like the new football coach at NVMS? Or, you know, what's the impotent or impetus?
Respectfully, I would say that for some, there are very active booster clubs or parents that are fundraising. And I don't think we have that due to the, the different nature of the competition.
Scott, wasn't this also a requirement that?
Yeah.
So I recall that we.
We have requirements to have unified, you know, to have to work towards.
Yes. So that's part of what's different, is we have not had a comprehensive, robust, unified athletics program. And that is the new requirement.
Well, if, if I may, when's the effective date of that law? Because it's not for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
Yeah, it's.
So that was the conversation that's been had before. And that's why we have to waive this policy is it's not law, nor is it going to be law next year, as far as I am understanding.
I can't remember when that goes into effect.
Yeah, Jared, that's right.
Scott, do you remember that?
Another two years, year?
It's another, it's in advance.
Something, something else for the June nineteenth meeting?
Yeah, so I think we need to table this conversation and get more information. Is that okay, Scott? Guys, is that all right?
Yeah. From a common perspective, I think that we're all behind this. And I think that we all agree to it in principle, but we just want to make sure that we get it right.
Right.
To be in compliance with our policies that we've set forth.
Right. And if we waive it, why are we waiving it? Okay. So are, is everybody good to come back? I don't want to add a ton more onto June nineteenth, but I think we need more information on this. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, so June nineteenth. All right, so moving on, we have a high school overnight field trip. You have your information in front of you.
Yeah, so what you have here, this is for the football program to go to Camp Robinhood, which is in Freedom, New Hampshire. They are looking at approximately sixty student athletes going for August seventeenth through August twentieth with one, two, three, four, five, six, looks like seven or eight coaches that will be going with them. We have brought all of, anytime we have an overnight or an out-of-state field trip, we always come to you for your approval. Your policy, I-J-O-A, which I had reviewed and we included in your packet for this evening, does not require it to be approved each time. That is what I have been doing, though. So I would just share that our process is a little different than what's identified in I-J-O-A. If it's a repeat overnight or out-of-state trip, I arguably don't need to bring that to you. I would just notify you, but I have always done that. So that is something I'm happy to, to follow the policy more directly than we have been. I think we've maybe been a little more cautious. I've kind of long-held the belief that if it's an overnight trip, I think the board should approve that.
This is a repeat trip, isn't it?
But what I want to make a comment on is, is this is something that the football team has been doing every year for at least ten years. Because I know I voted on it for the last ten. In fact, I probably made the motion a couple of times. So it's, it's well, and the explanation from, or last year, the year before, was the camaraderie that occurs with this. that occurs with this, when you're with someone for 24/7 for three and a half days, is, for the football team, it, it really puts them together, and, and it makes it a good, I'm trying to get the word, I'm looking for, maybe somebody can help me?
Team building, really.
It is a very good team building, and I, I support this.
And I would share, why football? If, if that's a question that anyone might have, this is the only request we have had. So I have had no other similar requests from any other athletic teams. This is the only one.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve. Scott, you have...
Oh, no, I found it.
Okay. Now, let's finish this, and I'll come right back to you.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the field trip request for August 17 through August 20, 23, for Camp Robinhood for the Goffstown High School football team.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
One second.
By Caroline, do further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Ginny, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, we're unanimous. All right, go ahead, Scott.
I did find it, I apologize. The program lasts eight weeks. There are approximately six contests, about 20 students participate. The advisor spends approximately 40 hours. There is some training that's needed for, for, there is no fundraising that's necessary for this program. The program is predominantly at Goffstown High School, though there are away games. It does require uniforms, and the stipend was $1,605.67. It is a category three, which is equivalent to a freshman coach.
All right, well, I think we still need to think on it. Now that we have this information, we'll come back on June 19 with it.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Did we get the law yet?
No, we don't know when this has to happen by, so.
Yep.
Go ahead, Shane.
I mean, I think at a principle, we should approve this. I don't, I guess I just don't understand what the hesitation is to approve this. We have the dollar amount, we have the policy that we can waive. I don't know why we keep kicking the can down the line. I'll make the motion right now.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to waive policy JJ to add Unified Basketball to our 23, 24 budget with the coaching stipend of $1,605.67.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jared. Do I have further discussion?
I have, I am not comfortable with it, and I'm very disappointed that you would feel it necessary to make that motion tonight, not wait two weeks until we get full information. We also have another policy that says each board member shall be fully informed before making a decision, and you're forcing me to make a decision without being fully informed. Just saying. You can vote, no?
Thank you, Dan. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
I'm forced to abstain without all information available.
Thank you, Dan. All right, so we have one abstention.
Yeah, and I'm really sad that I couldn't vote in the affirmative. It really bothers me, and you can tell by the inflection in my voice. Okay, next.
All right, moving on, did our field trip annual affirmation of data governance?
So the RSA 18966V requires us to update the board annually of any changes to our data governance plan, and Mr. Borget is not here this evening. He is out of state, so I do apologize if you have any technical questions, I will do my best to answer them. Mr. Cludier probably would be able to answer them better than me. There are three changes that Mr. Borget had identified. Number one, we added a requirement for two-factor authorization for any VPN connection. That is change number one. Change number two, we added Appendix N defining data privacy requirements for contracted service providers that were removed from the SAU contract addendum. And number three, we added Appendix O defining system access requirements for contract service providers that were removed from the SAU contract addendum. The plans have been updated and posted on the website.
Any motion?
We don't need a motion, but it would just be the annual, you know, affirmation that I've updated you with those changes to the data governance plan.
It's got to be reflected in the minutes.
Yep. Dan, did you want to do that?
Did we ever accept the data governance plan itself?
Yeah, I'm sure we did.
We probably should.
When we first adopted it, the board did approve that plan, yes.
And we did that pursuant to either state law?
Yes.
So would it be under our authority to approve any updates to that plan? Because that's the weird one, because our policy says we're gonna update the data governance plan for presentation to the board. It doesn't say that we have to approve the updates to the data governance.
No, you just read the form, that's it.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those that we did it first, but we don't have to keep doing it when the data governance plan gets updated, because the state law tells us what needs to happen in the data governance plan, blah, 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 blah.
Correct.
But we have, as a board, always deferred to going ahead and making a motion to make sure that we are not out of compliance, so.
So if the board was so inclined, you could make a motion to affirm the data governance plan with the three changes identified?
Yep.
I think that's a good idea, and I will make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
One second.
By Caroline, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, so the next is a list of all the field trips from all the schools. It is quite a packet here. Thank you, Brian, and everybody that took the time to do this. Does anybody have any questions? If not, we're just gonna move on. Go ahead, Ellen.
Just that, I know, looking at the, what policies have policies.
IJOA.
Yeah. I, looking through this, I greatly appreciate how many things we bring into our school district, but a field trip is an opportunity for these children to experience a trip. And while these activities that come into the schools are great, I'm sure they're far less expensive than going elsewhere. Second grade, the only thing, first grade doesn't go anywhere unless they're going to the high school. Second grade gets to Swamley. Third grade goes to Concord. Fourth grade, it looks like they go to Concord. Most of these are onsite activities, and I would, I don't know why we've left going on a trip, on a field trip. That experience itself has great value to these youngsters. I don't have anything against what we're bringing in, and I like that we're bringing in these other opportunities, but I would think we would also want these kids to be having those experiences of traveling outside of our own classrooms. I mean, it doesn't really start to have, well, looking at fifth grade, two, six, one...
Well, first grade goes to apple picking, and then they went to a couple of shows, but I think some of it was COVID where they couldn't travel, and then haven't, we've been having problems with buses.
We have very few...
Is that what has been driving?
Field trip drivers.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what's been driving.
So maybe next year, you know, we can try to get more kids out.
I mean, I know we all support field trips, and I know the superintendent does too.
I do.
And I greatly appreciate this list. It's very informative, and I love these things that are coming into the schools. I just know that there is a great value to these kids having the experience to go out.
Right.
And if we get to the point with regard to available bus drivers, that kind of thing, I hope the teachers will be putting in for those kinds of activities.
I do as well.
I know, we can't be approving anything we're doing unless it's put in for, but they can't even request them unless we have the transification available. So I hope that that will clear up, and the kids will be able to go places. I've just seen the value of it to these kids, so.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Ellen. Go ahead, Dan.
No, I'd like to ask Ellen, you said it's, it's a valuable experience for the first graders to lead the classroom and go someplace. Can you elaborate on that?
All kids, all kids, not just first graders.
Okay, all kids, I'm...
My experience is...
I'm not a student.
Yeah.
I was not one who, because I was an introvert, had problems going on field trips. So I'm trying to understand the concept.
There is, there is value to children having the variety of experiences, and in my experience, both as a, I went on all the field trips that the kids went on, when my kids were little, and then as a teacher, the experience of kids, many, many, many children don't get to go anywhere outside of their own town, and to be able to have the experience to travel with the group on a bus, to go to a particular place, whether it's a play or some museum or something, to learn the appropriate behaviors, to realize you have to go through an admission to enter, I mean, there's a lot to be learned by doing these things with your peers.
Got it.
And that shared experience is of value to the whole class as they go through the year and through each grade. I've just seen the value be so worthwhile to so many children, and I hope that we can start having available bus drivers and that the teachers will start putting in for those types of things as well.
Right, absolutely.
That was helpful, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Ginny? I agree on the importance of field trips, and I hope, I know busing is difficult, but I'm hoping that teachers are putting in for things that are interesting for kids to do, in hopes that a bus could be available, instead of, you know, thinking, well, buses are different, difficult, so we won't. Yeah, hopefully next year we'll start to see stuff... Maybe things will look up. Coming around as we're passing through COVID year. All right, so we already kind of talked on the reflections, but Rheta, did you want to touch on, there's a form?
Yeah, not any more than I said, other than, you know, if you want to look at these ahead of time, you'll recall in the past, we had much longer survey questions, so we're trying to nail it down, make it a little bit smaller, and really help us think about what it is we want to focus on in the upcoming year. So that's part of the retreat among the many other things.
Right.
So Rheta, just so I'm clear, I was gonna send this out to the board as a survey?
Yes.
Like, it'll be an Office 365 form, and it'll just have these same questions, so, and then we'll compile all the data and give it to you for the retreat.
Yes, and it would be great if we could have it before the retreat, so we can read it and not have to go through everything line by line.
You bet.
And I think also, if you do it, if you do the form online, it makes it a lot easier to compile all the responses.
It's, it's very easy. We'll just convert it to a PDF and share it with everybody.
Yeah, so thank you.
And that, that'll become part of our minutes.
Right.
So I just would remind people, whatever you're putting here, that this will be public.
Public minutes, yep.
Yep.
All right, so you're good, Rheta?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, so school stopping.
So we have a couple of, oh, excuse me, only one notification of a track change moving from Bachelor's to Bachelor's 15, so congratulations to Emma. Yes, that if there has not been a letter, a letter will go to her. For your approval, we have, I'm gonna do these in groups.
Yeah, why don't we do teacher resignations?
So teacher resignations, we would wish them well. Mrs. Pellchat and Ms. Jardine moving on from Bartlett and from Goffstown High School.
Yeah, so I'll need a motion to accept these teacher resignations.
To accept the resignations.
Thank you. Caroline, do I have a second? By Ginny. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. Go ahead.
So continuing on, teacher nominations, we have a couple of different folks here, four different teachers are being nominated. One for Mountain View Middle School Special Ed Teacher, two high school math teachers, and one district-wide emotional behavioral specialist. You'll notice that that is Dr. McMurray, so he is staying on with us, and he will be working with that group of students. So we'd like to welcome Karen Walter, Matthew Arnold, Dr. McMurray, and Jennifer...
Sporky?
Sporky?
Sporky.
Sporky, thank you.
Sporky. All right, I need a motion for those teacher nominations.
Motion to accept the nominations.
Thank you. Caroline, do I have a second? By Ginny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous.
For, thank you. For administrator nominations, I'm very happy and very pleased to bring a recommendation to nominate Jill Ryu as the Dean of Students at Maple Lab. This is the one-year additional administrative position that the board approved us to use an existing teacher position for that. Jill has been a wonderful teacher for us for many, many years. She's ready for this, and I couldn't be more thrilled and more happy to bring the recommendation. We are very fortunate that we have a very experienced special education facilitator that we're nominating for Mountain View Middle School. This is Lindsay Phillips. Lindsay is the current out-of-district coordinator and special ed administrator from the Bedford School District, so we're very pleased and excited to welcome Lindsay to join our team. And lastly, with Mrs. Freitas moving from the high school special ed facilitator position to the SAU District Director position, that left the opening here at the high school, and Mrs. Rosomek will move from the dean position into the special ed facilitator position. And all three of those are within budget.
Awesome. We'll need a motion on these administrative...
Let me ask a question.
Oh, sure, Ellen, go ahead.
I mean, we can have a motion to approve it and discuss.
Yeah, no, no, ask your question.
Do, do these then leave positions vacant that we need to fill?
Only one. So they'll, this will leave one...
The re- specialist?
Yeah, so down, you'll see down below, if the board approves the nomination, then we have a leave of absence for Mrs. Ryu, and that will be an opening. So that will be a vacancy.
I think that we have to fill.
That we have to fill.
Yeah. Shane, go ahead.
And then the dean of students, are we eliminating that?
No, so the dean of students will be vacant. We have, we have not started a process for that position. We wanted to wait until...
Okay, so we are gonna fill it?
Yeah, so absolutely, we're gonna fill it, but as of right now, we, we don't, we haven't started that process.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else, any other questions? All right, then we'll need a motion to accept the administrator nominations.
Motion to accept the administrator nominations.
Thank you. Caroline, do I have a second? By Ginny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. And then now the teacher leave of absence.
Yeah, now the, the last piece would be the leave of absence, and Mrs. Ryu has a lot of skills, and unfortunately, this will leave a vacancy in yet another hard-to-fill position. We recognize that, we knew that, we knew that going into this, we knew that if, if Jill was the successful candidate, that that would create a secondary hardship for us, but we will work our way through that. We've evaluated, we've looked at every staff member we have that has that endorsement, so we have looked at the possibility of some internal moves, but unfortunately, that's just a reality of where we find ourselves at Maple Lab.
Any questions on this one?
No.
Need a motion to accept it?
Motion to accept the leave of absence.
I have Caroline's motion, do I have a second? By Ginny. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. All right, other business that may legally come before the meeting?
I have a question.
Yes.
If I may. I'm pretty sure it's not, this is not something I'm beginning, but when do we intend to go through our CIP proposal, the school districts, page by page, CIP proposal?
Scott?
Next meeting, at the retreat.
At the retreat.
The retreat's gonna be spent on going through the school district CIP.
Not all of it.
Not all of it, but it has a very, very large component of, I guess, the picture of the facilities of our school district. So as you know.
It's gonna be quite a bit of discussion.
So, but we're gonna talk, so the plan is very specific. So I would ask and encourage board members to review the CIP plan, much of which is things that were new, Scott had already talked about and highlighted. We're going to be talking at the retreat also about, how do we, what do we do with the CIP now? So you've got millions and millions of dollars of capital projects that we need to have conversations about, how are we going to fund them? To Mr. Talbot's point, it's not a great strategy for us to be able to use the capital reserve fund because we have millions of dollars of needs, but yet we only have a small amount of money in that fund. So that's part of what we will be talking about at the retreat.
Certainly part of it is, and I don't remember the year, but it's within the next one or two years, the bonding. Okay, but there's also, if I'm remembering correctly, two town bonds coming up within the next year or two. I think we, and I don't know where our contracts are.
So we have all of that, we have, we're gonna go through all of that at the retreat. So we're gonna look at every fiscal year from now until FY '30. That's what we're, well, spoiler alert. That's what we're gonna be doing.
Anything else?
We do have non-public.
All right, so I'm sorry, guys, we have non-public again. So we need to make a motion to go into RSA 91A32A, right?
Yep, A.
By Caroline, do I have a second? By Ellen. Go call.
Yes.